Good to see a full house here tonight. We have a pretty packed agenda. I'm going to call to order the October 14th, 2019 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation by Commissioner Dubach, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you can.
Tonight, we're all here for one reason. We love our community and we are willing to dedicate our time and service to it so that in 30 years, our children can be proud of the legacy we've left them. That legacy isn't just about the decisions we make, but how we make them. We live in tragically dark and divisive political times where insults and personal attacks are more commonplace than thoughtful debate and discussion, but it doesn't have to be that way here in our community. So as we gather once again to make decisions about our shared future, let's strive to be the best possible versions of ourselves. Let's set an example that inspires the next generation with how we represent our values, how we address each other, how we listen to each other, and how we seek to see the good in each of us. Let's leave a legacy of good governance where well-meaning people come together to build a stronger community and a more prosperous future. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a bunch of sharp dressed people here tonight. So that brings us up to item number four, which is the Fire Department Awards. Chief Cummins.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thanks for letting us be on the agenda tonight to do this. For those of you who don't know, Chief Strelky really updated our awards policy about 15 or 20 years ago, and it's went largely unused until the last couple of years. And we've tried to tie it as close as we can to Fire Prevention Week, which is whatever week October 9th falls in honor of the Great Chicago Fire of 1871. So, anyway, we have seven possible awards in the department. One is a group award, and one you just have to stay employed to get. So really, only five. This year, we had about 6,200 runs, and we have four awards that were given out. One is a unit citation. We're not going to recognize that here tonight. But for the first award, it's a life-saving award. I'd like to have firefighter Nate Matthews, firefighter Ryan Edwards, and firefighter Dan Adorian please come up. Last year, we were lucky enough to have one of the patients that was involved in these runs join us, which is nice because then we can tell you a little bit more about it without violating anybody's privacy. I'll do my best to kind of tell you the story why these gentlemen are being recognized tonight. They responded to a vehicle versus pedestrian incident. This one was nominated almost a year to the day last year when we did this. The thing that made it stand out even over and above other runs was the fact that they had several things they had to identify and be overcome. One, they had construction issues, as anybody who's been driving around town lately can tell you, that caused a situation where it made it very difficult for us to even get the patient where we needed to get them, not to mention the fact that we already had a highly traumatic incident that we were dealing with. Part B of the run deals with identifying a critical problem that this particular patient had, which was they had a pneumothorax, which, without getting overly technical, these gentlemen here had to basically decompress this person's chest, let trapped air out so that they could breathe. 100%, if they wouldn't have intervened, the outcome would have been much, much different. And as it turns out, the patient was feeling much better upon arrival at the hospital than when these guys got him. So for their efforts, I'd like to acknowledge firefighter Nate Matthews, Ryan Edwards, and Dan Adorian. Captain Hegerberg, firefighter Love Day, firefighter Cockcroft, please come up, firefighter Shaw. And there was one more person that received this award, but he got an even better award. He retired before he could get it tonight. So these gentlemen are here. Again, we respond on, like I said, 6,200 runs a year, and I don't know exactly how many CPRs that we are involved in every year, but they don't always end up in the situation that this one did, which was not only did they restore vital signs, but the patient involved was able to walk out of the hospital with no deficits, which is really pretty incredible. So these gentlemen arrived on scene, a person absent of vital signs. Due to their actions, again, the person walked out of the hospital with no deficits due to their direct actions, so we want to acknowledge their efforts. All right, and the last award, the first two were life-saving awards. This award's a little different. This is one that we don't give out very often for a lot of reasons, that it's hard to get, and you don't get a lot of opportunities. We're giving out this award for bravery. We have Lieutenant Mike Glad you come up. Yeah, the other two gentlemen that were involved are not able to be here with us. There was firefighter Mitch Masser and firefighter Travis McPherson. This particular incident, again, without getting into so much detail that everybody knows who I'm talking about, we responded to a house fire with a trapped occupant, and these men went from firefighting operations, had to put the hose line down, step away from their own personal safety and what keeps them safe, to go do what our primary mission is in the fire service, which is to extricate people out of burning buildings when they can't do so for themselves. So I wish I had more than just Lieutenant Glad you here to shake their hand, but this is really our primary mission, and it makes me incredibly proud to be able to honor Mike and these guys tonight for their efforts on that fire. Thank you again, and for everybody that's here for the ceremony, we will go downstairs so we don't disrupt the meeting taking pictures and that sort of thing. Thanks again.
How about one more round? We are so fortunate to have some of the bravest firefighters working on our behalf. Real quick, before we commence public comment, the City Commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to help make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the City Commission on any city-related issue, whether it's on the agenda or not. I ask that comments be directed to the Commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. In addition to public comment, there will be a public hearing at tonight's meeting. If you're here to comment on the vacation of two public easements at 700 South Main Street, you may wait until the public hearing is opened, and you can comment at that time. If you wish to speak tonight at either public comment or at the public hearings, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor. Raise your hand, come up to the podium, please state your name and address for the record, and please be mindful that the City Commission wishes to hear from anyone who wants to speak tonight. So time is limited to three minutes, and there's a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, that's all right. Feel free, many people email us and get in to contact us or contact us through other means. Please note that the City Commission won't respond directly to public comment. However, we're taking notes, and we'll address those questions when the agenda topic is discussed or refer to the proper city department if your issue is not on the agenda. And our city manager, Dave Gillum, is also taking notes and looks into matters as needed. So with that, I know we have a special guest here tonight that I'm going to start first. We have Garrett from Bruegger's Bagels. They wanted to say a few things. I know they have to start early in the morning tomorrow, so we'll call in them first.
So we'd like to, you know, hi, Royal Oak City Commission and Council. We are your friendly neighbors at the Bruegger's Bagels, and we have heard some buzz that we might be closing. We wanted to make sure that, in fact, that is not the case. We've been in the community for upwards of 30 years and have every intention on staying. So we decided to stop by and bring some bagels to share with everybody this evening that we've freshly baked for you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Garrett Polly. I am the store manager at your local Bruegger's. In addition to the bagels and coupons that we have brought to you guys, we are also giving out free medium coffees with a purchase to every Royal Oak occupant with a valid ID. Just come on in between this Wednesday and this Friday, and come check us out.
We also want to make sure that, you know, in the time, we are still open and we are here for any of your catering or bagel needs. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you very much for coming out. Thank you for the bagels. Oh, are the bagels up there?
Yeah, they're right, yeah, right here.
Oh, perfect. I mean, not that I haven't had dinner.
I didn't this time of night either, so you can take mine for breakfast.
Yeah, we could do, actually, how's this sound? Maybe we could keep them right there?
Perfect.
And then if you come up for public comment, and you stick to your three minutes. You can grab a half a bagel or a bagel. How does that sound? Now remember, if you show up between Wednesday and Friday, right?
Wednesday and Friday.
And you show your ID, then you get a, and it says Royal Oak on it.
Correct.
You get a coffee.
Yep, free medium coffee.
Wow, that's a pretty good deal.
What time frame on that?
We open at 6:00 a.m. and we close at 4:00 p.m.
Okay, thanks.
Hi. Usually, when I show my ID, I'm not getting coffee. I'm just kidding, nobody asks for my ID.
Thank you again.
Thank you. I've approached that hurdle in life. I know we have a number of people here to talk about the Harrison project, so I am going to kind of carve out public comment tonight to accommodate those who are here from a neighborhood perspective. I see Mr. Colo, Mr. Thompson. I'm going to ask, how do you guys want to do this tonight? I'll afford you 10 minutes if you want to speak as an association, or you can come up and speak individually. The community welcomes any way which you want to do.
Well, try staying under 10 minutes. How's that?
Oh, so you want to come up and speak as an association? Okay. Is that preferred?
Do they get bagels?
Yeah. Except Mr. Colo.
I was only here for the bagels. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the Commission, Brandon Colo, 600 East Hudson. We actually do want to keep this short. We've gone through many, many rounds of talks. We've met with the developer. After your last meeting, you sent us back, or the developer back, and said, hey, please meet with the neighborhood. And we've taken time to look at a new project, and I just want to say, it's been a great process. We, as a neighborhood, are really happy with what's going to be built. Developer has come and met with many of our requests to change this project to make it better fit a single-family neighborhood. So thank you to the commissioners who came out, Commissioner Gibbs, Perusch, Macy and LeBassier, and Mr. Mayor came out, and Commissioner Buck gave so many ideas for environmental impacts. It's been a really good process. So with that, I'm going to introduce the president of our neighbor association, who can explain some of these changes that we made, and hopefully you guys can approve this project tonight. Thank you.
Mike Thompson, 1210 Irving, Alasen Park Homeowners Association. Andrew?
Andrew Kalanowski, 10008 Potavia. I'm Vanna White tonight.
You're an excellent model, Andrew.
Closer though, Andrew, okay. All right, so we're here to speak about the epic on the Harrison, and we met with developer Mr. Wolfson last Thursday night, and we've gone over some items back and forth, so we want to present the project. Little history first on this first board. The epic on the Harrison is seven units, four stories originally, so we felt it was way over in size and scale and height with not correct setbacks. We're kind of surprised that the planning commission approved this project. Comparing it to building 15 single-family houses was kind of ridiculous because no one in that area would build 15 single-family houses on that high-volume truck route next to the recycling plant and next to the other condominiums. That land is ripe for multifamily, which is what it should be developed now. Multifamily is the proper transition between single-family homes and uses that you don't want to be next to, like railroad tracks and industrial and power lines. So it's in the right spot. The question is controlling it and getting it to blend with the neighborhood, so, with the neighborhood homes. So the second point was that this is indeed a better development than the one two years ago. Now, the one two years ago, that's not true. The one two years ago shoved the mass of the building down on the southwest corner and left about 46 feet back from the neighborhoods with carports and drives and some landscaping. So that, even though it had more density, this is a better solution. It's 87% the size of the original. Now, the original had more density, but the mass was in the wrong place. So in meeting with, thank you, Commissioner Perusch, that you suggested that we meet with the developer, it was fruitful last week. So Andrew flipped the board. This is how, at this point, and with Mr. Wolfson will be up here at Agenda Item Number Nine. So this is a mitigation. This is what we want, to protect this neighborhood and to get this to better blend and be a better transition. So the shifting of the two north buildings, two out of seven, five feet south, losing six spaces here and three spaces here, a continuous wide greenbelt buffer saving existing trees along the north and the east. It's wider with plantings. Also, we're concerned about trash collection, and we want that to be internal, we assume it is, with no dumpster on the site. The sound rating of mechanical units, these are some minor points, but we want to make sure the condensers aren't in the backyard. The whole thing is, this is a very sensitive approval to change a single-family zone into a multifamily, and you have to be very careful along that edge, that sensitive edge. So we want to have control over the sound there. We want to, in the language of the agreement and with Mr. Wolfson's agreement, have no allowed at-grade patios off the back, because part of his agreement to lower the heights on these three units was that he'd like to look at adding rooms or dens in the lower level. So we want to keep those out of this greenbelt as well. It all has to do with sound and privacy when you're up against the backyards of these residential houses. We want to, the developer to study the lighting, that we've got these wonderful huge warehouse industrial buildings that Mr. Wolfson's architect designed, and they're huge, but they're also turning the buildings into huge lanterns. So some type of study with architectural screens or fritz or shades, but we're asking for special considerations because this is not your typical unit. Typically, multifamily dwellings, according to our zoning ordinance, have to be 150 feet away instead of 25 feet from property lines. So we're asking to load up some special agreements in your eventual review, and hopefully with the right, you know, things, we get approval. And then the city, we have an area here where Harrison is part of this high route, this high density from the Mohawk flawed exit entrance to 696 that spills right into the neighborhood. There are six diverters that protect the single-family residential, so it zooms right by the Harrison 1 and the Harrison 2. So as part of that, Mr. Wolfson, the developer, is landscaping the former Harrison berm. But we'd like a joint venture with the city to see if we can get some grass, wild grass, some benches, something to really transform that dirt lot into something that's more permanent and to enhance both the epic at the Harrison as well as the neighborhood. So with that, that's our result of meeting with Mr. Wolfson, and hopefully he'll agree to these terms, and we can move on. So, thank you.
And if I may, one of the provisions for the berms, because we're very berm happy in our neighborhood, is possibly having a, we thought of maybe a gateway park or a little pocket park that could connect the communities. Mr. Wolfson was very kind in letting us come out and speak our mind, but he was in agreement that we'd like to connect our communities. We're all part of the south end, whether we rent or we have a condo there. I think it'd be a beautiful way and a beautiful stepping stone. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just to summarize again really quick, it was a very productive meeting. We've made a lot of agreements there, as you know, Mr. Mayor, and once again, we all come out and thank everyone involved in this tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Colo. All right. And I see a lot of the neighbors here tonight, which is, we appreciate you coming out. All right. I think we can open it up to the rest of public comment. Ms. Donigan.
So I'm here to talk about the animal shelter, and I'm here to tell everyone, you and everyone within earshot, that the Royal Oak Animal Shelter is clean, organized, and a well-run facility for cats and dogs. And I have to say, I had not been to the animal shelter since I was a kid, and back then it was the dog pound, not a pleasant place. And I hadn't really thought about it either since 2003, when, as a member of the City Commission, we decided to keep it in Royal Oak. So I went over there after hearing speaker after speaker trash it, and I thought, what is going on? I know Jody Ellison, who's the manager, and I trust Royal Oak Police Department, so I thought I should see for myself. So I did expect to see and smell the dog pound that I remember as my youth. The place is, after all, an old cinder block building that sits in the middle of an industrial park, but what I saw was like opposite day. I didn't expect a facility that was shiny and clean and odor-free. The place where the towels are stored, and this is a big deal, I think, the place where the towels are stored looks nicer than my own linen closet. Each of the cats and kittens had a little story attached to it, to the cage, and it had instructions about what they need. Are they shy? Are they brand-new there? Are they acclimating? They don't like sudden movements, that kind of thing. There was no spilled litter, no food laying around. It was nicer than my basement when I had cats. The indoor and outdoor dog pens were spotless. Each pen has the dog's favorite toys, and they all have clean individual beds. Honestly, there was no dust, there was no dirt, there was no nothing, except clean floors and clean walls. So I was there again this last Saturday. When I got there, there was a young woman was leaving with her brand-new kitten. It was that cute gray one with the white paws. Another woman, whose beloved cat had recently died, was there to adopt Almond, who was an older cat who had been there for a while. A dad and his daughter came back to see a dog they might come back and adopt next weekend, and honestly, I was so relieved to see these people come and go and so that the negative comments hadn't reached them, or perhaps they had reached them and they decided that they weren't true after all. So all in all, being at the shelter and watching people leave with their new pets made me smile and made my day, so I applied to become a volunteer. So should I pass the test? People who know me say that I'll paint and I'll landscape and I'll pull weeds and probably put up art, which is possibly true, but I do like to keep things clean and spotless, just like it is there. So I told Katie that I wield a mean hose. I come from a long line of hosers, people who hose the, you know, the garage and the driveway. So I had five cats as an adult, but we don't have any now. So after spending a little bit of time at the animal shelter, I'm looking forward to going back and getting some cat time, and I hope that these cats that I spend some time with will become someone's pet soon.
Thank you, Ms. Donigan. All right, who's next? I see Mr. Razor here, he had his hand up front first.
Jim Razor, 201 East Fourth. I don't want a bagel, so I need a little bit of extra time because I want to present the city with a check for $2,318.63 for the animal shelter, and I'd like to tell the city a little bit about this check.
Well, if you come with a check like that, I don't know. Do you think we can extend a little bit more of time? Okay, we can extend a little bit more time.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to let you know that this community cares about the animal shelter, and I want to let you know that after we heard some things about the animal shelter that was unfortunate at the last meeting, me and a bunch of people, and I'll put the entire list on Facebook for everybody to see, but it's too many people to name, given the extra time you've given me. But we raised this money because we've got confidence in the shelter manager, and we've got confidence in this community, and confidence in our animal shelter. And I just want to send the message that the positive change that you seek in anything in Royal Oak is something you roll up your sleeves and you do. So on behalf of myself and about 30 other people, I want to give the city a check made payable to City of Royal Oak Animal Shelter in the name of Jody Ellison for $2,318.63. Madam Clerk? And let me tell you, that took about 10 days, and if we did it more, we'd raise more. Okay, can I go to my comment now, Mr. Mayor?
You go to your public comment now.
Thank you so much.
We can restart at three minutes since that was a check presentation.
Okay, first of all, the cell tower thing, I know that we can do a good thing with when we all work together. I know we're going to have a great result. I hope you guys talk about it as a group at some point in time, maybe tonight, if you get it added to the agenda, maybe we could have a report by staff for alternatives by the 28th. I know we'll do a good job on this. I want to talk about Royal Oak. I am so proud today to see our firefighters get awards for doing the things that we funded them to do, which is save our lives, to see Bruegger's bring up bagels to us, to see you folks volunteering your time, to be here. We live in a town that's a top-50 city in the United States for safety. You think about that, top 50 out of every city. We have a lower tax rate than seven of our neighboring communities. We have a half billion in new investment. That brings jobs, tax revenue, and new residents to our city. We have a balanced budget, a $15 million fund balanced, a new civic complex with no new taxes. Our parking problem at 11 and Main solved with no new taxes, and an AA+ credit rating. And I don't like to go negative, because you guys know that about me, right? But I got to tell you that there are some people that want to derail this progress for us, and they want to talk about made-up problems, that they say that they are the only ones that they can solve. They want to talk about no-bid contracts where they don't exist. Commissioner Perusch was good enough to put on Facebook the links to all of the bids for City Hall and the police station. They want to talk about the animal shelter and try to make it a political issue when it's the best-run shelter we've ever had, and they want to talk about, like this Henry Ford building. We get double our money back. It's in the contract, but they want to say it's a giveaway. And these are the type of things that people do when they're trying to derail progress and gain back power. Sam China just wrote a thing, an op-ed, and he said, oh, these no-bid contracts. Well, this open-door bid process that we've used since I was commissioner and when Chuck was a commissioner is something that Chuck was involved in, and I have the paperwork to prove it, when he represented Don Nahad to try to tie up the lot to the west of me. This is how we do open-door contracts for development of real estate, and it works very well. And this whole movement is led by a person who, and I hate to say it, but it's got to be said, resigned in disgrace because he had multiple drunk drivings and because he was under investigation for bribery, and who then resigned in disgrace and sued the city and got a nominal settlement. And I haven't seen him since. He's not involved, he's absent. He didn't come to the League of Women Voters Forum. Mr. Mayor, you did, and I appreciated you being there and answering the questions. I appreciate, and I have to tell you in all honesty, you folks have been able to solve problems that my commission and the commissions before were unable to do, and my hat's off to you for what you've done. We have to keep up this progress for our community, and we can't say yes to this fear in these tactics.
Mr. Razor, I do need you to finish your last point.
Mr. Mayor, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, who's next? Mr. Ashley.
My name is Alan Ashley. I'm president of Royal Oak Manor. I was not able to attend the League of Women's Voter, but I did have some knowledge of it when I was... able to attend the League of Women's Voter, but I did have some knowledge of it, where Commissioner Perusch and Commissioner Dubach stated that the, at that event, that the city attorney made it very clear that we could not offer discount parking to low-income seniors who reside at Royal Oak Manor, even though you raised the parking 80% for seniors living on Social Security. Thank you very much for that. But if that's true, then the Roses Program, which has a sliding scale for seniors, the Housing Grant Program, that has discounts offered to the seniors, Royal Oak Restaurants, DTE, the Consumers Energy, and et cetera, all offer discount programs for seniors. Are these illegal? I doubt it. But yet, if you wanted to, you probably could set up a program for discount programs for seniors for parking. You're going to tell me that Royal Oak cannot do what Ferndale did, paying $20 a year for senior parking? You can't do the same as Ferndale? Only question I have to the rest, to some of you, especially Commissioner Perusch, who says that we shouldn't rent to seniors who drive. First of all, we're a HUD building, which means we're under fair housing. That is illegal, Commissioner, and I hope you understand that. Maybe we go to your house in your neighborhood.
I do need you to address the Commissioner's role, sir.
Right, but she made this about Royal Oak Manor. So I'm just answering her. Maybe we'll go to her neighborhood and say, because your neighborhood is like this, all seniors, you can no longer drive. How would you like that? But to these commissioners, how can you look your in-laws, your parents, in the face and say they are seniors? How can you treat other seniors like that? I am surprised they haven't looked at you and said, why are you treating the seniors in the Royal Oak as you have been, with no respect and no care about what happens with them? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashley. All right, we're going to have another reminder that we can't clap. We need to take a break and remind everyone of the rules. We can do that. Mr. Wolf, once again, I want to remind everybody, for those that are new here, we don't allow applauding after public comment for the fact that it may discourage people. Okay, we're going to take a five-minute recess. All right, if I can ask everyone to kind of quiet down the conversation, because we're going to start back up again. So we'll call the meeting back to order. And just a reminder to everybody, I know things get passionate, things get heated. We'd always agree on every topic, but the important thing is that everyone's afforded the opportunity to come up to this podium, speak their mind, and not feel intimidated. And this is a rule that goes across every city across the state and country. You know, we've got to keep our applause and our clapping and our comments and our discussion to a minimum, and afford the floor to the person that is at the podium, and afford respect to other people who may have a disagreeing opinion to keep quiet. Okay? All right? Okay. Commissioner Perusch, there was an incident with the last public comment, where somebody talked directly to Commissioner Perusch, and she's asked for a few seconds to respond about a couple of things, so I'm going to afford her 30 seconds to respond.
30 seconds, because I know that the agenda is short and the Lions game is on tonight, and we all want to get there to watch it. So very quickly, first of all, I may not look like it, but I'm a senior. I believe I'll be 69 years old in about three weeks. I have parents who are 96 years old, so to imply that I don't understand seniors or don't understand what they need or what they need in this community is a little insulting. Secondly, in terms of the benefits to seniors, what the city attorney has said is that we cannot give a special benefit to just a small group of seniors, the 29 or 20 or 19 seniors who live in the Royal Oak Manor. It would have to be to all seniors as a whole, not only in Royal Oak, but in the entire world, who might want to park and get a special deal. We have outstanding revenue bonds that are supporting our parking system, which originated not necessarily with this new deck, but with the older decks that we have. And the Parking Committee of the DDA has set those rates in order to be able to pay those parking bonds. If we reduce the rates significantly to reduce the rates for seniors, we can't pay those bonds, which means then it comes out of our taxes. Third, third, the other programs that you mentioned, the Roses Program, the other federal assistance programs that we have for seniors, those are specifically written for seniors in the federal statute, and they're written that way, and therefore they're applied that way. So we can be discriminatory with those programs, because that's the way Congress has funded them, and that's the way that they are implemented here in this community and everywhere else. I just want to make that clear, that there's a big difference between those types of programs and giving special benefit to a small group of seniors who want parking passes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, who's next? I see a hand right back there in the back corner.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Keith Wisman, 417 Hendry, and I'm a disgruntled former volunteer at the shelter. In the months since we began asking questions and raising issues regarding the shelter, we've experienced all the usual deflections and ignoring and disparaging comments and that whole thing, the stonewalling. And according to the charter for the shelter, the overall responsibility is with the police chief with day-to-day responsibility delegated to the deputy chief on behalf of this commission. The police department is a evidentiary activity for our city, supposed to look at and act on evidence, and we've been presenting clear evidence of mismanagement, along with patterns of behavior that are contrary to the health and welfare of the animals. One meeting was held with the deputy chief on October 1st and appeared promising, and a promise was made to continue the conversation, and we were hopeful about that, but the return has not yet occurred. With respect to Marie and Jim, appearances can be deceiving. The shelter looked and smelled clean before, and the reason there were so many people at the shelter on Saturday was private citizens doing promotion through different social media. It wasn't a result of the shelter doing promotion. The Shelter Committee minutes have not been posted since July of 2019, which is kind of strange. The agendas for the monthly meetings don't show up online until an hour or so prior to the meeting, which makes it hard for some people to plan. And that just doesn't look good. It just gives appearances that we don't want to have for here in Royal Oak. And based on what I could hear during the August meeting, the August financial report had so many inconsistencies and problems, the deputy chief said, I got to go back, review this, redo it, and we'll report back. And to the best of my memory, there was no financial report at the September meeting. So I don't know what's going on with the financials within the shelter. I really appreciated Commissioner Dubach's invocation this evening about, I'll just call it civility, but at the last two advisory committee meetings, Jim Ellison was out of order. First, by verbally attacking and berating people immediately after the public comment time. I was shocked. And at the last meeting, during the business portion of the meeting, Jim approached the committee table and whispered to Commissioner Levaser. Now, if I had done something like that, that would have been stopped, but there was no action taken to stop it. It was very strange. And it just feeds the appearances that there's a special agenda and there's meeting control by Jim Ellison.
Mr. Wisman, I do need you to finish your last thought, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't even watching. So I just, I just want to keep you up to date with how things are going. I'm very unhappy with the shelter. We can do a whole lot better. And thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, who's next? I see a hand right here. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. I'm a part-time, just one day a week at the shelter, and I've been there a few years.
Ma'am, can we get your name and address for the record, please?
Sorry. Dana Daly, 1419 East 5th. I've been there a few years, long enough to know that after each shift, every cage has to be cleaned, every litter box cleaned, cats were fed. I mean, they were fed, not one tablespoon of wet food. They were fed. And the floors had to be mobbed, and they were probably cleaner, because we could use soap. We're not allowed to use any cleaning or soap, and that's okay. That's fine. I don't care about that. But my big concern, and I have several veterinarians, including the Cat Practice of Birmingham that specialize in cats, you must feed them free-range food as much as they can eat and want. Kittens are growing, just like teenagers. They can't subside. We've had bony kittens. We've had, we have one now that's very bony. And I bring this up, I've brought it up to the manager, I don't get a response. I ask, please, I'll even buy the food. So the next step was the Shelter Committee. There's only a couple on that committee that really care, no one else. The majority won't listen. I brought it up to you. Can we please get some more kitten food? They need more than one tablespoon in the morning, and they need more than one tablespoon at night. One day I went in there, and this is no big deal, there was adult dry food in the cat, or the kitten bowl. And I just emailed Jody, there's adult food, can I just replace it with kitten food, or I'm going to, you know, with kitten food. It was no big deal. And I got blasted. You got a copy of it. You got the copy. And that's just not how you treat people, whether you're a volunteer and employee or just your neighbor. You just don't talk to them like that. If you'd like another copy, or want me to read it, I'll do it, or anybody that wants one. Anyways, they need more food. Do you want, do you want these instructions from the Cat Practice, Kimball veterinarian? Great.
Yeah, if you can drop them off with the clerk.
I will, when I'm done. I am really pleased, after several requests, many requests, and finally, that someone listened here, because we've got multiple kittens now in the larger cages, instead of a small cage, and shelter rules, other shelter rules, multiple kittens in larger cages. Let's see. And, you know, yes, of course, about talking respectful to the past volunteers and employees. That won't be an issue, because they're all gone now. New ones that she hires, handpicked, they're not going to go through the same as we did. There was nothing wrong with our employees that we had. Heather was great with social media. She had an animal page up with all the animals. That was really on the decline once the new manager took over. I'm not trying to point fingers, I'm just saying it was not done. I would post them up on Nextdoor.com, and then I was putting them up on the Shelter site, but I was no longer allowed to put them up there. So now I put them up on Facebook and some nice videos, and they got a lot of attention.
Ms. Daly, I do need you to finish your.
Okay, and that attention brings people to the shelter, especially when you see two German Shepherds and pit bulls jumping all over, you know, they need to get out, they need a yard, they need to get adopted. They're not going to get adopted at $200 a dog. You guys just raise the price to $200 a dog. No one's going to pay 400 bucks for a bonded pair of Shepherds. They're hard to even give away.
Thank you, Ms. Daly.
Okay.
If you want to drop that off with the clerk, don't forget, please. I see Mr. Rapinski in the back. I see you looking at those bagels, Mr. Rapinski.
Got it. Mike Rapinski, 3152 Parker. I'm not here to complain tonight. In fact, I'm here because in honor of our neighbors to the south or north, wherever you want to look in Canada, it's Canadian Thanksgiving Day today, and I want to give thanks for a lot of things we have going in our city. First of all, the Royal Oak Golf Course. Thank you to Joe Spatafor and his team at the golf course, the city administration, the DPS, Parks and Rec, anybody who's contributed. We have one of the nicest-looking golf courses in the area now. We have all-new cart paths throughout the course. We have a beautifully new paved parking lot that's not like a moonscape like it used to be. If you haven't had a chance to just drive through there, just drive through the parking lot and see the fruits of what's going on. And I'll take you back to when we had the Norman D. Oaks Task Force, which I was privileged and honored to be part of, and some of our friends here on the commission, Ms. Gibbs, Ms. Macy, Ms. Douglas, Mr. Dubach was in there, I think, in the beginning, and even past Mayor Ellison. One of the things we put out there when we first decided to sell off the 10 acres for the Robertson Development was to set aside some of that money to improve the existing golf course. And it's taken a while, but it's finally happened. And thanks to everybody involved, we have a wonderful golf course. It's proud. I played there last Friday with some friends who had not been there in quite a while, and they were very impressed. So thanks to everyone who was involved in that. I'd also like to thank all the volunteers in this great city that we have. People that volunteer, maybe at the library, maybe it's in the parks when we do park cleanups, all the city boards and committees that we have, who are volunteers that give their time to participate in the process of helping run our great city. Thank you to all the volunteers. It's a great thing that we have here, the way we do things in this city, and I'm so proud to be part of it. Thank you for reappointing me to the Parks and Rec Board. I had to take a year off for some health reasons, and I'm happy to say that I'm able to participate in that again, so thank you for that. Also like to thank all the volunteers at the animal shelter, past and present, and those that are still at the shelter, making a difference, keeping things going. I was there recently, last Saturday, and a couple times recently before that, and the shelter is clean. It's well-organized. It's efficient. It's well-run. I observed the staff at the shelter interacting with visitors in a very professional, friendly manner. People left the shelter, I think, with a positive impression. So I'm troubled by all the negative stuff that's out there, but I'm not going to talk about that tonight. I do also want to thank the shelter manager, Jody Ellison, for all that she's doing under some tough circumstances, and I for one think we should continue, and I think she's doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rapinski. Everyone, 30 seconds tonight if there is to speak.
This is going to be real quick. I just wanted to say that Mr. Rapinski was dodging the fact that he was a major player in getting that golf course fixed up with that money when he was heading up Parks and Rec, and we're so glad to have him back.
I see Mr. Halleck maybe back there in the corner.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. First, I'd like to also recognize the fire people. I have great admiration for people who are willing to run into a burning building to save my rear end, so my kudos to them. A couple of weeks ago, at the last city commission meeting, you had a room full of very unhappy volunteers for the past and present for the animal shelter. I don't know those people. They are not part of any political campaign. The proper thing to do for the commission at that point would have been to express support for the person involved, namely the manager, and then task somebody with looking into it because of the quantity of people that had complaints. Instead, we were treated to one of what I regard as one of the most appalling episodes I've ever seen in my life at the city commission. We had one commissioner immediately basically call everybody a liar by saying they were slandering when there was no investigation done. He had no idea what was true and what was not true, and he wanted to know how to shut everybody up and deny them their right to speak, which is the First Amendment rights. How do we prevent these people from speaking was the correct, exact phrase used. Then we had somebody else at the table started discussing about how to sue people for this, which is intimidating people to prevent them from speaking. That's unacceptable. That is absolutely backwards from what this table should be doing. You should have simply said, we are in support of this employee, but we're going to investigate it. That's the correct course. You do not start trying to deny people their First Amendment rights, and while I'm getting funny looks from the two people who were involved in that discussion, go review the last meeting and look at the last 20 minutes, and you'll see exactly what I'm saying is exactly true. And it's appalling. It should never have happened.
Thank you, Mr. Halleck. All right, we'll go with Mr. Wolf.
I wouldn't mind some polite applause. First, I want to show this sign. Apparently, the camera is perfectly, is purposely avoiding signs held by people in this audience. Why is it legal for the mayor and attorney manager to charter illegally Why is it legal for the mayor and attorney manager to charter illegally donate $6 million to Mr. Bolge, a private developer, but it is illegal to give a discount to a few low-income seniors who are parking on city lot property, not in the parking structures where what Ms. Peruch described is an agreement that they cannot get a discount? Now, also, Ms. Peruch, by the way, is the person who initiated the reduction of public comment to three minutes. And I want to thank the African-American mission, AME Church, who donated $3,000 to help these elderly and handicapped seniors who need to keep their scars to survive. Looks like they're going to have to continue to pay, now they're going to have to, at the end of October, go back to paying a $45 fee that is much too exorbitant for someone low-income, depending on social security. But for the city to allow a few seniors these discounts is illegal? Voters, you, this November, you decide who's right. The residents, you, the residents, or the servants of special interests? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. All right, yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Jennifer Rosback, 4149 Sheffield. I just wanted to say thank you for bringing the Detroit, the downtown park to the, to the farmer's market last week. It was great. My family and I got to look at those designs and make some comments, so that's, that's the reason for my coming tonight, was to thank you for allowing us opportunities into how to design our city for the future. Thank you.
Ms. Rosback. Mr. Karlowski.
Hello, Rick Karlowski, 419 Virginia. There has been a lot of discussion about no-bid contracts, so I'd just like to say that there is a website out there, www.saynoinobid.com. That's S-A-Y-N-O, the number 2, N-O-B-I-D dot com. It's got all the stuff that was researched and listed. It's a heck of a lot more than $9 million bucks, so if anybody is interested, go down to the library, puck it up on your own phone or your own computer, take a look at it, and you can make your own opinions. Secondly, I'm going to somewhat echo Tom Halleck's comments there about the last commission meeting. It was somewhat disheartening that the city commission, or some city commissioners, were actually considering some sort of legal action against folks coming to the podium and speaking out. I know they tried that in Birmingham, it got slapped down, where you couldn't speak. I have no idea exactly what you were planning on doing. I certainly hope it was not having the city attorney sue folks for slander against a city employee. I certainly would expect the city to defend Jody Ellison if someone sued her for something in her role as the, as the animal shelter manager. I do not think it is anywhere the job or the function of this committee, or this commission, to censor speech, or start making things hate speech, or any other kind of speech you want to do, and intimidate people from coming to the podium. You have a big deal about people clapping, but apparently having the commission ask the city attorney for a legal opinion on how to shut down someone's comments at the podium doesn't seem to bother you, and I find that very, very distressing. And finally, there was some discussion about the double, or the, well, I'll leave that, I'll leave that for now. Just let's say, Jody Ellison is certainly not a wallflower here. She's on social media and can chirp a lot, a lot of people, so I don't think it's also a matter of you defending some naive person here. So I'm very distressed that that even occurred, and I hope that it will never, ever occur again. Thank you.
Hey, don't forget a bagel, Mr. Karlowski. Not many people are taking them right now. Don't forget.
It's because of the feedback.
Yeah, the feedback.
Fix this.
Yeah, you're hearing the, can you guys hear at least?
Yeah.
Okay, we see up here on our screen, I don't know, maybe I didn't, did it go blank?
I can't see it at this one.
Oh, right up here, okay.
And our tech guy just poked his head in the back door.
Yeah, we are, I think, the live feed, at least, video, I mean, we can, I'm looking at this monitor right here, we can, we can see it's being filmed and everything, so.
I think they're trying to identify the feedback source.
Okay, all right. So thank you. We'll get them turned on as soon as we can here for the convenience of the audience here, but we don't have any record of it not live streaming right now, do we?
No. It will be recorded.
Okay.
So it will record them, but I go to confirm that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Halleck. Who's next? Mr. Schneider.
Alex Schneider, 1011 Knowles. The, what's really troubling me is that when we had the picture on the screens, the sign was censored. Every time the sign came into a view of a camera, the camera turned away into a different angle. So somebody gave an order to the people downstairs to censor the sign, otherwise they took it upon themselves. So I don't know which is true here, but maybe you can find out, Mr. Mayor. Anyway, I realize it's Halloween season, and seeing the sign, it's sort of like a sign of the cross for certain people. Anyway, to address Mr. Razor, Steve Miller is not a leader of ROAR. I'm not a member of ROAR, but I do know that Miller is not the leader of ROAR. He's simply running for office. That's all it is. As far as Ms. Peruch, she, the last meeting, she claimed that there was no, no bid contracts. It's a mystery and myth. Well, Ms. Peruch can see, there is a building that's been built right here, inside the window. Just come to the window and have a look, Ms. Peruch. That land...
Mr. Schneider, I'm going to ask that you direct the commission as a whole and not individual.
I'm glad I'm getting to you all.
Okay, so I will address that, too. So the, the bottom line is, when you have a building going up there, and the land was given away for $1, there were no RFPs, there was no bidding contract awarded to Bolge. Now, why was it done? Why was it done? Maybe somebody wanted to bid $10 on that project, maybe $100, maybe $1 million, maybe $5 million. It's the loss to the taxpayers of this city. $1, is that's all it's worth? And you're talking about there is no no-bid contracts? Now, as far as applauding, there is nothing in the state law or Roberts rules against applause. You are governed by the Roberts rules. So please don't make up your corny rules and shove it at the people. If they want to applaud, they have a right to applaud. As far as addressing someone by name, once again, don't make up your own rules. I can address whomever I want. It's called First Amendment rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. All right, I see we're gonna, someone disagrees. Again, I just want to reiterate, it's not out of respect for this body, you don't have to respect us. It's out of respect for your fellow citizens and neighbors and friends and family that are sitting in this room, that we ask that you not applaud. I mean, this, this meeting isn't the commission's meeting, this meeting is the city's meeting, everybody in the city. And so there may be people here that have nothing to do with you, nothing to do with this commission, but may have a different opinion. So we're asking out of courtesy, and the reason why we have the rule is so we can respect others. You can say whatever you want to the commission here, you can send us emails and letters, and, and, I mean, that's, that's what we signed up to when we decided to volunteer in this community. But just, please keep in mind, when you're, when you're clapping, it disrupts the meeting, makes it go a little longer, and it intimidates your fellow citizens, so that's why we have that rule. Who's next?
Good evening, Pamela Lindell, 409 Inglewood Avenue. First, I'd like to say congratulations and how proud I am of our fire department. That's absolutely wonderful. As Mr. DeBuck said in his opening statement, which was so wonderful, we should be respectful to each other and to all of our citizens. With that in mind, I was very surprised and disappointed in the snarky comments this commission made at that last meeting after concerned citizens came here to give their three minutes, and we are not supposed to be mean and nasty and clap, but yet, this commission, snarky, sassy, disrespectful comments about the citizens that you're supposed to be representing that came here to discuss Knowles and Harrison Building Project and the animal shelter. I'm appalled. I am appalled. And now, Pat gets a chance to say what she wants to say after somebody said something about her. Are we going to invite all those people back so you can, so they can all rebuttal against all the nastiness that went on up here? I'm very disappointed. I am very disappointed. That's all I got. Thank you.
We have bagels. Mr. Moore.
Are you going to grab a bagel, Mr. Moore? No, I'm, all right, without a bagel. Travis Moore, 613 Detroit Avenue. There seems to be a lot of disgruntled people who don't understand that the animal shelters run better under Jody than it was prior to Jody. And, you know, many things have been said about, it's cleaner, but there's also the financials. And I want to talk about a couple of things that were brought up tonight. We review a financial report every month on the animal shelter committee. In August, there was a printing error in the financial system that the deputy chief was not able to resolve at 7 o'clock at night because the treasurer, whoever needed to be consulted about the printing errors, clearly not at the police station at 7 o'clock at night. So we were able to get the information that we needed, and I'd also like to talk for a minute about the adoption fees. $200 for adopting a dog is reasonable compared to most animal rescues and shelters, and it's not inexpensive to take care of these animals, and how does these animals provide for their medical care, their feeding, et cetera? So $200, and in my personal opinion, if somebody is complaining about $200 to adopt a dog, they probably aren't the right fit for adopting that dog, because if there's a serious medical concern that comes up, they're likely to bring it back if they can't even afford to adopt it, or the care could be neglected. So there's a reason for adoption fees. As far as the committee minutes and agendas, those are always provided. We have them for every meeting. I'm not sure where they're looking for those, but I can tell you, I, I see them, they're provided to the clerk, and I know that they exist. As far as there was a comment made about not being cleaned with soap, and I believe that might have something to do with the standards that Jody has put in place. Prior to Jody coming, there was a lot of bleach products that were used, and there are studies that show that the consistent use of bleach around young animals is not good for them. So she has made a conscious effort to switch over to a more natural type of cleaner that's still effective, but safer for the animals. And then also, I'd like to talk about the opinion of animals not being fed correctly. These animals are all under veterinary care, they're provided the recommended amounts of food that the veterinarian that they are seeing has recommended for them. There are some kittens that come in that are malnourished, they're basically street kittens found in parking lots, you know, they're not coming from a home. If an animal comes in malnourished, it can't be fed, free feeding, because it could make itself sicker. So they are provided the food that's recommended for them. Yes, thank you.
All right, who's next? Yes, sir.
Good evening, I'm Alex Williams with Mitchum Chapel Amy Church, 4207 West 14 Mile. It's been a while since I've been here, and I didn't just come for the bagels. I didn't honestly know they were going to be here. But I, we've gotten several anonymous donations to support our ministry and to support the seniors discounting their parking at Roil Oak Manor. We've gotten another anonymous donation for Roil Oak Manor of $5,000. So we'll be coupling that with some of our funds, and that should take them through 11 additional months of discounted parking. Another reason I came up is to, because we get these donations, I feel we're kind of obligated, or we ought to give report of what we do with our ministry. And so a couple of the things that we've done is we packed hygiene bags, a lot of the outreach we do is with, is with, used to be Lighthouse of Oakland County, now it's just Lighthouse, they coupled with another shelter. And so we filled over 100 hygiene bags, over 100 packs of gloves and socks that we gave out at Cass Park just, just yesterday. And we've offered 200, over 240 pounds of food to Lighthouse for their shelter. So just to kind of give an idea of what we do with the funds that are donated to us, I figured that was, that was appropriate, considering it's, it's an anonymous donation for, for our ministry. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Alex. Give our best to Mr. Boyd as well, please. Thank you. Although I'm doubtful anyone has a different opinion than Mr. Williams. Again, the applause. Okay. Who's next? Yes, ma'am.
I'm exhausted thinking about it. Well, one of the things I did want to comment on was Mr. Ellison made...
Ma'am, can we get your name?
Suzanne Chambers, Hudson Street, Roil Oak. There have been many, many, you're, you're right, there have been many, many negative comments floating everywhere in Roil Oak. But with the, one of the worst ones that I heard, well, other than Mr. Razor here tonight, there isn't anything more insulting than, than his behavior at this podium tonight. That was disgusting. But Mr. Ellison, and he's, you know, infinite wisdom, commented about how disappointed he is with the residents of Roil Oak, that we are, we're, we, a group, and I'm proudly affiliated with a group called ROAR in Roil Oak here. It's residents that are trying to be concerned, like I was connected to a group called Save Our Schools, you probably all have a little information about that. It's very important for residents to become involved, and to find anything negative to say about anyone in their town, city that they love enough to use their time and their energy to support good things in their city, to make their city better, to find fault in that is, is just, it's really bizarre, I guess, is what I would say. Some of the comments that Mr. Ellison made were really bad about the group that I happen to be proud to belong to called ROAR, how that we spit, we, we send out false information, spread misleading information, mudslinging and phony controversies, conversations to the election, and, and he hasn't even know our group, how he comes up with all this, I don't know. But, so, I, what I'm saying, what I'm thinking to myself all the time is, why would a city commission or any table that makes decisions that beg to have the people vote for them? You know, the literature that's just begging us for our vote. So we vote, and then the people that are elected are dismissed and criticized, like the people that are running, Mr. Lavasser and Ms. Lindell and Mr. that are running, Mr. LaVassar and, and Ms. Lindell, and Mr. Miller, who is a highly intelligent man, highly intelligent, did well at, at other times at this commission. And, and Tom Halleck, what a wonderful man. Very, very well-prepared, well, highly intelligent people that would do very well at that table. Thank you, Randy. And so, I, I'm really amazed that you would be critical of the people. We, the people that pay for all of it, clap, but you would let someone come up here by the name of Mr. Razor and speak with, with, with just venom. I've never heard anyone speak so, with such hatred. You, that didn't bother you at all? I can't imagine, but clapping, but clapping is so highly offensive. So, I just, I guess it's because I try to be nega, positive rather than negative. And so, I, I would only hope that we do, the people that are voting aren't afraid of change. I'm the last speaker, afraid of change, and don't be afraid to vote in new people.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm sure, I'm sure.
Who else is here to speak tonight at public comment?
Thank you.
Yes, sir, here in the back. Again, once again, you know, we ask that you don't applaud because you may have neighbors here or other fellow citizens that may have a dissenting opinion, and they may be intimidated by that, so.
Good evening, commissioners, mayor.
My name is David Brisboy. I live at 405 Lexington in Royal Oak. I've been proud of living here since 1981 when I rented my first flat apartment on Baker Street over by 11 Mile, and then bought a house in 1984. So, I've been here for a couple of years, and there are some people who have been here, of course, a little longer than I have. But what raised my attention today was the recent letter from Royal Oak regarding the backflow on the fresh water supply and the technicians that'll be coming out, and I don't remember all the details associated with it, but on whether or not we have to implement something on our, if we had a sprinkler system, or just on our garden faucets to ensure there wasn't contamination of the water supply. So, you guys definitely know more about that than I do. But it also raised my attention when I looked at the minutes from the last meeting, or for today, about the storm water slash sewage. And I understand the issue is principally that we have one system, it's combined, so sewage and storm water goes through. But I guess my disappointment is, is that the commission isn't thinking far enough into the future on some topics. And I, and I am so thrilled to see today, tonight, that there was participative government between a homeowners association, a builder, and downtown. That's the first time I've ever seen or heard of that actually happening in that way, direct communication, not coming to a special event to discuss whatever. And I think you need to do this on this same topic. And the reason I'm suggesting that is, is that aside from the whole sidewalk debacle, and that we've just implemented hundreds of miles of sidewalk, which of course are going to increase the amount of storm water drainage, but when that happened, that also triggered people to go off and do some additional upgrades to their driveways or other areas of themselves because they didn't have an option to get a permeable surface. It's still in the books, as far as I know, that you have to come and apply for special permission to do that. So, I would not have done what I did with my concrete driveway had I known I had that option. And most people are intimidated to come down to the city and discuss about these variances, just working with the engineering department on various code changes and things of that type to make sure that we're straight and legal. So, what I'm going to recommend is that we do not create a new department or taxing authority associated with that, that we reinvestigate the whole situation. I think Lansing is wrong on this one, I know I've got 15 seconds. And that if we do end up having to create a department, then I would strongly recommend we look at eliminating another department in the city to cover the cost of that new department because things do change. There have to be services and things that are as near as demand as this is, given all the environmental changes and impacts. Thank you.
Just one thing to add. Today, I know it's too late for you. We have the permeable pavement one on there. Yeah, sorry about that.
That's alright.
Okay, who's next? I see a hand, is that Ms. Hennessy?
Good evening, mayor and commission. Carol Hennessy, 258 East 12 Mile Road. First of all, I would like to thank our Royal Oak Fire Department. They are great. Unfortunately, we had to use them not too long ago, and I think they helped save my husband's life and, and take very good care of him. And they took care of me because I was a basket case, but they did a great job, and he's doing much better. And then, I was also at the farmer's market on Wednesday, and I have to comment about the Veterans Monument. I saw all the plans, and I'm not quite happy with them. The monument needs to be in a spot where people can reflect. And by putting it in front of a splash pad or water just coming out of the ground, or in the other spots that it had, it is not getting the serenity that should be around it. If you ever sat out here and watched families and individuals coming there and talking to their loved ones, or just sitting on the bench reflecting, they need the peace and quiet and the serenity. And if you're keeping the Star Dream and the Walkway there, why not leave the monument there? And on the back side, just put flowers there and make it look like a beautiful area on the other side so the people in the park could enjoy all the, all the flowers. That would be my suggestion. And the other problem with moving it again, it's been moved two, two times, I believe, and it has a big crack in it. I know it's been fixed, but who knows what's going to happen the third time if it's moved, even if it's moved a short way. There's one other thing that I have to bring up, and I'm hesitant to bring it up, but I have to. I was appalled at a meeting I went to, and I'm running out of time. But basically, what it was, I went to a meeting where it was a committee reappointments meeting, and Mr. DeBuck stated that some people were too old, or they were too political, and they should not be on the committee, and Pat Perusch seconded it. Now, I know there were four of us in the category of being old. All of them were qualified, and they appointed people that were Democrats and that were non-qualified. And I just have to say that Judy Davis was instructed to go and look for people to be on these committees, and she was told to get Democrats to be, sit on these committees. And, okay. And that's all I wanted to let you know. I just think that's totally wrong, that we should have nonpartisan committees, just like we have, supposedly have a nonpartisan commission. Thank you.
Alright, who's next? Alright, we may have someone that has a differing opinion. Out of respect for our fellow neighbors, we ask that you don't applaud because we don't want to intimidate anyone that wants to come up here and speak tonight, okay? Anybody else wish to speak tonight? Going once. I see a hand right here in the middle.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Commission. First of all, I want to express my appreciation and gratitude for the-
Sir, I need you to state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Doug Thompson, 1703 Barrett Avenue. First, I want to express my appreciation and gratitude to our brave firefighters in this city, and also to our wonderful police force. They do an outstanding job, and neither group, I believe, gets the praise and admiration that they so truly deserve. Secondly, I want to just, with, at the risk of piling on, I just want to echo the comments that were made earlier by Mr. Tom Halleck, Pam Lindell, and others about the comments that were made at the end of the meeting, la, last meeting regarding the volunteers who spoke about their concerns of the animal shelter. These volunteers are very passionate about animals, or they wouldn't be volunteering. And to, I wasn't at the meeting, but I watched the video. And the comments that were made by various members of the, at the committee, of the commission, I found to be shocking and appalling to just, without any investigation, just jump to the conclusion that they must be telling untruths, and then for other members to discuss, can we sue them? Are there legal actions we can take to shut these people up? Now, I'm paraphrasing, those weren't the exact words. If you want the exact words and you don't recall, review the tape, it's there for everyone to see. And I found it appalling that an elected body would make such comments about citizens coming up and expressing their concerns without anyone bothering to investigate, is there any truth to their concerns? They just jumped to the conclusion that these people must be wrong and that we're not going to do anything other than, can we sue them? And, and the attorney mentioned something that, I forget the exact words, but no, we can't sue them because it was their truth they were speaking. They believed what they were saying to be true. It was something like that that you had said. And I thought, oh my God, what the hell are we doing here? But anyhow, that being said, there's a certain arrogance that emanates from this body, and I think it's time we change things. We've got an election coming up, and it's time to make some changes. Need to get Tom Halleck on there, Steve Miller on there, and keep Randy LaVassar in there. Thank you.
Okay, once again, I'll remind everybody, there may be people here that have a dissenting opinion, and they're your neighbors, it's not us, you know, and we don't want to intimidate them from speaking their mind, okay? So, we do ask that you refrain from applauding. Thank you. Yes, sir.
That's what it was. They have the southern skin. They just, they store everything, it's just, it's crazy.
Eric Schaefer, 723 East 11 Mile. I've made myself a promise that as long as we have the three-minute limit, I'm coming every time, every time. Canceling vacations, canceling dinners, every time. The arrogance and the dismissiveness that you people radiate, I would tell you, the best thing you could do for yourselves personally is to review the last commission meeting minutes and the behavior, the facial expressions. I've had people call me about this. This has become the subject of chatter among some people that I know. But some people never learn. It's just a tip you might consider learning. I just noticed this business with the animal shelter. It continues to be discussed. I don't want to dismiss it as not important, but you know, you did some $60 million deals. Now, we got the animal shelter. I mean, you folks can't really get it done. It's a level of incompetence is what it really is. And then, you have the mayor's wife gets $20,000 to make it better per year. I mean, what the hell is that about? And you don't, oh gee whiz, we're making it better. Then we spend 10 grand to have somebody scoop the poop, and people are still bitching. So, at some point, you got to realize you are responsible. And I've looked at the voting record here. Clearly, there's a pattern of divisiveness. There is a pattern of divisiveness like crazy. There are people that have one view and people that have another. And you people with one view, you're determined to shove it down to the other people. You talk about tolerance, Mr. Mayor? You have no tolerance. You learn to tolerate applause, you learn to tolerate criticism, and you can learn to tolerate rejection in a couple of weeks. Because the people of this city, they have had it with this. This is, it's an unbelievable display for what once was a prosperous city with solid financials. And whether you're a senior or you're young, you just can't count. You people just can't count. I go around this city, I see tra, streetlights that don't work all over the place. West side of 4th Street, west of Maine, they don't work. Recently, east of Maine, they weren't working. Up on Campbell Road, north of 11, the streetlight, all over this city, streetlights don't work. You cannot do what you're supposed to do. You're worrying about the guy who's the Starbucks coffee brewer, and that he has a reasonably priced place for him to live. I'm going to give you a tip, your job is to take care of the taxpayers, the homeowners, the citizens. Don't worry about your other dreams about stacking us five floors high. Well, I suppose I won't repeat it, but don't jam us together anymore. You don't understand when you're doing that, you are disadvantaging the existing residents. Thank you very much, and good luck to you all in your next job.
Just a point of clarification. It was mentioned in the last public comment that my wife receives $20,000 for something at the animal shelter. My wife is a part-time public school teacher, so if she could bring in $20,000, that would be amazing, but she definitely doesn't work for the Royal Oak Animal Shelter.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. Pardon me, I'm sorry, I'm the former mayor. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was wrong.
Alright, who's next? Come on, let's keep it together, everyone. Who's next? Going once, going twice. Alright, we're bringing the meeting back up to this side of the table. Mr. Wolf, public comment is over. I'll ask that you take your seat, please, sir. That brings us to item number six, the approval of the agenda. Commissioner LaVassar.
I would move to approve the agenda, but add an item to, uh, uh, bring up the cell tower that Mr. Razor brought up in public comment.
Motion by Commissioner LaVassar, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Gibbs. Discussion, Commissioner Perusch.
Commissioner LaVassar, I apologize, I didn't hear the last part of your comment, what the content is of the-
Cell tower, Mr. Razor during public comment referenced a cell.
Oh, the cell tower, the cell tower. I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Okay. To a motion to approve the agenda with an additional item 12, which is a discussion on cell tower. Any discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Alright, that brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? Okay, the consent agenda consists of city commission special meeting stormwater work session minutes from September 16th, city commission meeting minutes from September 23rd, approval of appointments committee recommendations claimed September 27th and October 8th and October 11th, 2019, approval of purchase orders, declaration disposal, disposal of surplus property, approval of 2020 automobile theft prevention authority grant sub-recipient agreement, commission for the arts recommendation for public art mural, approval of the second contract for indigenous defense managed assigned council coordinator, planning commission recommendation zoning ordinance amendments to allow permeable pavement, second reading, and authorization to execute closing documents, 700 South Main Street. Also, to receive and file non-action items, which are the June 2019 Revenue and Expenditure Variant Summary Report and the September 2019 Investment Report. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Macy, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Perusch. Discussion. Commissioner Macy.
I just want to say, because I see them here tonight, that some of our new Parks and Rec appointees, so I wanted to say welcome to Stephanie Comptoir, and welcome back to Mr. Rapinski, I'm not sure if he's still here, and also to Eileen Orlansky. We're looking forward to having a full contingent at Parks and Rec and Senior Advisory.
Yes, thank you for your service. This is going to be a good year. Thank you. Alright, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Alright, this brings us to item number eight, which is a public hearing to vacate two public easements, South Hun, or 700 South Main Street. That would be Mr. Gillum.
Mayor and commissioners, this public hearing is to receive public comment on the potential vacation of two easements at 700 South Main Street. Everybody's aware, this is the parking lot, the southern lot of what used to be the Frazard bump shop property years ago that the city has agreed to sell to open community college for the purposes of the development- for the purposes of the development of a culinary center. The title work that was done for purposes of the transfer, in the normal course of any kind of a real estate transaction, showed that there were still a couple public utility easements that ran across the property. The utility easements in and of themselves probably aren't the issue here, but the way the easements are written, they prohibit the construction of any kind of a building above the easements. And that's the biggest concern that Oakland Community College has had. So as we're trying to get the last ducks in a row to be able to actually close on this transaction, I'd indicated to outside counsel for the university that we would bring a proposal forward to the city commission to vacate those two easements. So, because there is city interest in this property, conservative reading, we went ahead and we asked that this be scheduled for a public hearing. That's what we're here for tonight. And at the close of the public hearing, we would be recommending that you approve the resolution that's contained in the memo I prepared dated September 27th of this year.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Gillum? All right, no questions.
I'll ask a question.
Okay, Commissioner LaBassar?
I take these easements are not needed for any purpose that the city may have, or any the neighboring properties may have.
That's correct, yeah. Conversations I've had with the staff in the engineering department, the only utilities, the water and sewer that run through the easements currently are...serve only Oakland Community College. Once they acquire the property, then they'll continue to serve the college until such a point in time that the college may choose to have those moved or relocated.
Any other questions? All right, I'm going to open up the public hearing on this. Same rules applies to public comment. Three minutes, state your name and address. And who wants to be first, or does anyone wish to speak here at this public hearing tonight? Yes, sir?
Eric Schaefer, 723 East Eleven Mile.
Guess the format is you can't ask questions, but I'm surprised I didn't hear anything about the valuation of this easement property where it sounds like we're giving away. Do I hear anybody offering a value? With? Length? Is it an acre? Can I know? Should I ask? Sounds to me like it would be worth at least a half a million dollars. Anybody tell me how wide, how long? Should be right there. I ask that we not move on such things till we know the size of the property, the commercial value. Let's not give any more stuff away before November. Thank you very much. I don't need to belabor it. I hope you get the idea.
All right, who's next?
1011 Knowles, once again. I've been coming here for about 20 years. So, I remember when there was a vacation of easements, or public alleys, city always got some money for it. So, yes, I stand to differ with you. So I think, in the interest of the taxpayer, the city should explore a possibility of getting some money. Maybe somebody wants to purchase it. It will be of benefit to the taxpayer, not to a developer.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. Anybody else wish to speak here tonight at this public hearing, related to the vacation? See a hand back there?
Good evening. Doug Thompson, 1703 Barrett Avenue, Mr. Mayor and City Commission. I just want to echo support for the two previous gentlemen. I think it would be helpful for us, the taxpayers, to know how big this property is. Are we talking two feet by three feet? Or are we talking, you know, something, an acre or two? And what would be the commercial value that we would be giving away potentially? And maybe we shouldn't potentially just give it away. Maybe we should get a purchase price for it. And maybe you folks already know that information, the size. I would hope that someone knows the size. And once knowing the size and its location in the city, it wouldn't be hard to put some kind of commercial resale value on it. And I think that information should be made available to us, the taxpayers, so that we might be able to understand better, are we getting a good deal? Are we giving away something that's worthless? Or are we giving away something of value? I really, you know, it's on a lot of people's minds about giving away prime downtown parking lots for a buck to a developer. And we don't want to repeat that. So if you could make us available, make available to us the information of the size, location, and approximate retail value of this property, so that we could weigh in on it and say, yeah, you know, wait a minute, maybe we ought to put this up for sale. Oakland Community College, they got money. We need it, because we got a big bond come and due. So, my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Who's next? Is that a stretch or a hand?
Stretch.
Okay. All right, you might not want to go to an auction. I'm just kidding. Yes, Mr. Moore?
Travis Moore, 613 Detroit Avenue. And I believe we're already getting money for the property as a whole, so I just wanted to throw that out there, so that everybody is aware that there's already a price for the property for the college. And I'm thankful to the city staff and everybody that's worked on this. And I think allowing them to do this and bringing that program here, they're such a huge part of our community, that I'm really excited to see it all come together. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring the discussion back up here. Mr. Gillum, maybe just a few questions we heard at public comment. The first being, in my experience with every single vacation that we have of an alley, or any sort of, when it comes to a vacation, do we have the ability to charge for that property, or do we have to bequeath it to the adjacent property owners?
We're not talking about vacating an alley here. The, the property in question, or the easements, are basically the city's right to use utilities within an area of the property that used to be an alley. But the alley itself was vacated back in the early 1980s. So the alley no longer exists anymore. What we're really talking about is the city's right to run public utilities through that alley currently, to serve, as indicated in the response to Commissioner LaBassar before, to serve Oakland Community College only. One of the easements is, runs the length of the vacated alley. The other is approximately 35 feet by 10 feet wide, if I'm reading the, the actual vacation resolution from 1982 correctly. So we're talking about a relatively small portion of the property. And again, it's just our right to use those for purposes of the utilities, which again, other than OCC, we have, have no real interest in doing. And as indicated by the last speaker, the property itself has been sold for value $650,000, which was appraised value for the property.
Yeah, and just a question on that. I mean, that, this, what we have here is the vacation of the easements. The property was actually vacated back in 1982, and, I mean, that's already a foregone, you know, there's no opportunity to sell it to...I guess it's already been vacated. So we're talking about the easements, but in prior meetings here, on public record, transparently, we've shown the agreement, the development agreement. We've had it in front of us a number of times where we actually had the appraised value, the price issued, and we voted on it up here to sell the property for the appraised value. Am I correct in my remembrance?
That's correct, yeah. And the survey, which shows the easement itself is actually attached to the proposed resolution, so it is part of the posted agenda.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. Mr. Twain, can you come up here? I just want to make sure the, in the agenda that was posted, we have a, and we had this out on Thursday, we have the actual dimension. Are all these dimensions on the property accurate? The easement, the size and the dimensions of the parcel? I see a map here where we have everything presented to the public and to ourselves.
I didn't participate in the review of this particular letter, but from what I can tell, it's the survey that was done for the site. So the surveyor would correct it. Just to add to Mr. Gillum's comment, the city can't sell public rights of way, even if it was not vacated, on the basis that a public right of way is given to the city at the time it's platted. So it's not, it's not a private piece of property that you owned or anything else with it. So even if it wasn't, if you were vacating it, to get to your question, we cannot sell those, because they were deeded to us at some time.
Because I know we tried it one time.
Yeah.
I learned that eight years ago. Other questions? Discussion? Commissioner Dubb?
Yes, it was previously stated that the college is paying us the fair market appraised value for the property, correct? And I assume that that appraisal did not consider that there's a narrow strip of land cutting across the center of this property that they would not be able to use. I assume that fair market value assumed the use of the entire parcel? That's correct. Okay, so this is really just in complying with our existing agreement, that we're going to clear this, this right of way.
Commissioner LaBassar?
I just want to get clarification. Is this an easement over land that used to be owned by Frasard before the city acquired that?
This is, originally was a public alley, then the public alley was vacated, and at that time, then the property would have been owned by Frasard, or acquired by Frasard at some point.
Half by Frasard, half by the college?
Of whoever the other adjacent property owner is, yes.
All right, so basically, the reason for creating the easement, if I understood it, was to ensure that utilities could get to the Oakland Community College over Frasard's property, if I'm understanding correctly?
Although it wasn't Frasard's property at the time, but yeah, that's correct. It was, so the utilities could get to the college, that's correct.
All right, okay. Any other questions? Comments? We have a proposed resolution in front of us. Commissioner Douglas?
Approval of the resolution?
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion. Commissioner LaBassar?
When the sale of this parcel to Oakland Community College came up a few months ago, I opposed it, not because I opposed the plans that OCC had for this property, but I did not believe that the city had gone through the proper steps in marketing this property, making sure that the taxpayers got the most value for the property, that sort of thing. I came up short on that vote at that commission meeting. It is what it is. We have a binding contract with OCC. I'm going to support this motion, I'll explain why. This is not selling a parcel of land. It's, it's about the question of whether or not the city has a reservation of rights to ensure that utilities get to Oakland Community College. And my understanding is OCC looks at this and says, well, gee, we need to build over this. This creates a problem for us, having this reservation of rights that have no beneficiaries other than us, Oakland Community College. It's not a question of selling a strip of land, it's about the question of whether or not the city is reserving rights to run utilities across this particular area of land. And it's only OCC that benefits from that, that easement. And for that reason, and there being no benefit to the public in tying OCC's hands with regard to their placement of structures, and for that reason, I'll support the motion.
Commissioner Dubb?
Thank you, Mayor. This property has been on the market for as long as I can remember, the better part of the last eight years.
But our economic development manager did list them all, all the, out of the downtown development.
Over the years, we had several parties come and go, enter negotiations and fade away. OCC had actually approached several years ago in a deal that never materialized. So, you know, the idea that there's anything unscrupulous about this process, when the property's been sitting there for many years, that anybody could bid on, I think is, you know, not really congruent with, with what we've done here. That being said, this isn't just a project that is a good use. It's, it's an excellent use in partnership with another public entity that's going to bring tremendous value to our residents. Not just in the aesthetic that it's going to bring to Main Street by completely remodeling the Main Street-facing portion of the college, but in that they're bringing their culinary school here, they're growing their programs here, and the fact that we can help facilitate that, not just with the sale of the property, but, you know, by clearing the easement, which seems like a no-brainer to me. I, I think the community should rightfully be very excited about. So this is, I think, one of the final steps in solidifying this agreement, and I look forward to continued partnership with OCC going forward, as they continue to bring value to our residents and thousands of others that come into our community to take advantage of what that college has to offer.
Anybody else? I'll just echo, this project is one of many projects that's going to bring value to our community. And we're talking about, you know, public education, you know, taking care of some of these, I don't want to say housekeeping things, but, you know, necessary things in order to make the property appropriate to develop for OCC. And to Commissioner Dubb's point, I mean, this has been a process, just like everything. If you're interested in all the documents, they're all available online. They've all been presented in front of us at this meeting. We've had debate, discussion, well before we got to this point tonight. And even, you know, we had a point, a point coming out of the Downtown Task Force where we listed the parking lots online, like you'd list your house. I mean, yes, none of these properties were put on the auction block, that would be a crazy idea, but just like you list your house, you put the sign out front, you see who comes, and, you know, OCC came, couldn't get to a deal, went away. Under new leadership, they came back, and we have something really amazing. And we had a few stories in between there as well. So, great project, great opportunity. Again, coming out of the Downtown Task Force, we're going to get an awesome culinary institution here with OCC, so very exciting. All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. So this brings us to item number nine, which is the Planning Commission Recommendation Conditional Rezoning of Northeast Corner, Noel Street, and East Harrison Avenue, First Reading. Mr. Twain?
Mayor, member of the commission. At your September 23rd meeting, you did receive a recommendation from the Planning Commission in regards to a conditional rezoning request on Knowles and East Harrison. That conditional rezoning request was a request to rezone several parcels from one family residential to mixed-use one, to allow the construction of 51 multifamily dwelling units in seven different separate buildings. At that meeting, the request was postponed. The developer did go back and submit a revised plan that's in your packet this evening on October 4th. There's a summary of the revisions that the petitioner is proposing in those drawings, highlighting those simply, they eliminated seven parallel spots in the central landscape area, which reduced the overall total down to 160. What that did was allow them to shift the north rear yard setbacks for two buildings, Buildings Four and Five, to increase it from 20 to 25 feet. They also, as highlighted there, removed the four-story from Buildings Four, Five, and Six, lowering the height of each from 40 feet 3 inches to 30 feet 1 and 1/4 inches. They also shifted the proposed rooftop patios and terraces for those buildings from the side that was toward the interior of the site. They also eliminated the adjacent to Building Six. That was an additional sheet. And they did also add an option for the ground floor den in Buildings Four, Five, and Six. That technically could eliminate one parking space in each of those attached garage units. If all of those units, or 24 units, chose the den option, it would reduce the overall parking from 160 to 136. The proposed development is only required under ordinance to have 102. So those are the summary of the revisions from the developer's submission at your September 23rd meeting. Again, the October 4th plans in this memo are related to his proposed conditional rezoning. Again, I will remind the commission that the conditional rezoning is subject to the petitioner providing you with his conditions. You're not, and you should react to those plans that are in front of you. There is a resolution there, if you support, the project is submitted.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Twain? Do we have any questions for Mr. Twain? Commissioner Levaser, then Commissioner Dubb.
If, if I'm understanding correctly, these plans that are before us do not reflect the most recent meetings between the developer and the neighborhood association, and whatever arrangements they may have agreed upon.
Whatever discussions occurred between the residents and the developer are not represented in these plans.
Do we have a feel for how much time might be needed to revise the plans to reflect those?
Again, that, to me, that would be up to the developer if he wants to make a revision to his submission. I would suggest that possibly, depending on the scale of that, he would, he'd postpone it until he made those revisions. But I, I don't have any revisions from the developer other than October 4th. And as I said, the conditional rezoning is a voluntary offer in writing of his proposal. So I don't have anything other than what's in front of you.
Do we, do we need a motion, or can the chair simply use discretion in getting feedback from the developer whether he wishes to revise the plans?
I think if nobody objects, I did intend on hearing from Mr. Wolfson tonight. We did receive some correspondence from the neighborhood. We have some correspondence in front of us from Mr. Wolfson. So I think for him to be for any action, I think it would be fair to the neighborhood and to Mr. Wolfson to, you know, since we pushed this off last time, to have him come back and, and inform us where he stands. Before we do that, are there any questions for Mr. Twain? Additional questions? Commissioner Perusch.
This is a follow-up to Commissioner Levaser's question. I know that you have said, and the statute says that the offer of the conditions has to be in writing from the developer, and it can't be mandated by the city and incorporated into the plan. In terms of timing, if there are additional things other than this list in front of us in the memo that Mr. Wolfson and the developers are going to offer, could that take place between tonight, which is first reading, and later on when second reading occurs? Or does it have to occur before we take action on first reading?
Well, the summary list is only the changes. Everything that's on the submitted site plan, building packet, design layout, materials are all part of his offer. Alls we've highlighted is what's changed between September 23rd and October 4th. So that's all that's highlighted. But the actual plans that are attached under a conditional rezoning is what he would be allowed to build. So he's changed those and made that six, seven changes. So if he wants to change something else, I would suggest that he submit revised plans.
But the question is, is, does he have to do that before we take action on this, on first reading?
I would suggest so that it's very clear as to what you're approving on first reading.
Okay. That was my question.
That would be my recommendation also.
That was my question.
Okay, Mr. Wolfson?
Robert Wolfson, I live at 590 East Harrison, Reloc. The plans that we have submitted about two weeks ago on October, well, what is it? October 4th change, are, were really not changing where the buildings, well, we, we've done a few things. We've changed it based on making it more palatable to our neighbors. And those things are, we've changed, I think you had the 25-foot setback, changed from 20 is already on that. And I think you've got, this whale was taken off. So almost everything is taken off except for this list that we have that we're in agreement to do. And it's, really doesn't affect, I don't think it affects any, anything that we're, you're voting on today for, for the approval of, of the project. It's just these things we're adding to it with people that we've met with in the neighborhood. And, you know, if you could go over them, they're pretty simple. They are things like, we're going to make the fence from six foot to eight foot. We're increasing it. We're not changing anything except, you know, that. We've also got, you know, preserve all the trees that are in decent shape is put into this, which is, which we would have done anyways. And there's some asterisks that are into this. We're willing to basically add this to, to it and say, we are willing to do what we've agreed with, with the homeowners and their association to make them satisfied with the project. I don't, I don't think it really is changing, and I don't know, Tim, if it has or, you know, affected the rest of the plan. We've added the things that I think were the key ones previously. When was the plan submitted? Yeah. So it's, it's in your package, that plan is not changing. We're not asking to change that. We're asking to change things like, you know, a railing on it, which even on the plan said it could be wood or glass. We're asking to change the height of, of the trees, or not the trees, but the fence from six to eight feet. We're asking to, what else we have? We also wanted to make sure that we changed the fence, unless I just said that, that on the patios, or not even their patios, they're, they're on the second floor, change it from wood to glass, but we already had it drawn on the plans. And the glass has to be obscured. So we're agreeing to do all of these things that were in question with them. You guys got anything to say more about that? So I think if you, if, everything that's on here is what makes them happy and we're willing to abide by it. The key thing was, we dropped the fourth floor off completely on both buildings, all three buildings, the east building and the two north buildings. And we made it so they couldn't, that they could not, they wouldn't have to deal with the fourth floor up there.
From today, each L1 Investments LLC.
Right.
You provided this to us, each a copy.
Yes.
And what I hear you saying is that you're voluntarily submitting these changes based on the neighborhood's Lawson Park Homeowners Association required changes, and you are voluntarily saying that your, whatever you submit is going to accommodate the changes that are attached in this document.
Yes. With the asterisks that they put in.
With the asterisks they put in.
Right.
Okay. Commissioner Dubb.
That was along the lines of my question, so if that's the situation, if this letter contains everything that you discussed with the neighborhood-
Right.
-and everyone's satisfied.
Yeah, it's their letter.
Okay. Well, so, and you're satisfied with all the terms here, too.
Right, I'm just agreeing to it.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you for meeting with, and thanks to everyone from the neighborhood for, for having that meeting and, you know, being able to have a discussion, to get to a place where, you know, this can be a win for everybody. And I'm sure you're making some compromises. Obviously, you're making some compromises, but we'll go forward together.
I would like to say this, though. If we didn't get approved today, or tabled for some reason, I would want to look at it, a couple of items, but if I'm approved today, I'm fine with the way it is. And there were only words, you know, the language, like whether the trees are dead or whether they're actually in bad shape or they're in good shape, you know.
Yeah, whether or not it says they're sustainable.
We wouldn't want to keep them. Yeah, we wouldn't want to keep them. So I might change a few words there. I think the patios that are on there, you know, we've got a site plan that says that we won't put a patio back there. Our site plan doesn't include a patio to begin with. So, you know, the language that they want to put in is, is that we won't put a patio back there. Well, we can't put a patio because you're not approving that to begin with.
Right. Commissioner Dubb.
So then, I'm curious, so we're looking at first reading tonight. Can, if we were to consider first reading on condition that all of these amendments are included in the design on second reading, is that appropriate?
Well, I, my recommendation would be that you, you postpone it if he wants to incorporate something, and have him revise a site plan that's submitted that includes the elements that he's willing to submit. This letter is from the Lawson Park Homeowners Association. It's not from Mr. Wolfson or his development.
Yeah.
And there are, and there are requests from the association that, if I read correctly later in their presentation, Mr. Wolfson's disagreeing with and wants to go back to something else. So in terms of clarity as to what he's offering as conditions, I would recommend that if he wants to modify his plan, that he post, you postpone this and he submit a revised plan. That's my recommendation to you, because I have no idea what this is included in this and not included in this.
Commissioner Levaser.
To revise the plans, and if I may address Mr. Wolfson, to revise the plan, how much time would you need to do that, to incorporate this? Would, would two weeks be sufficient?
How about two weeks? Sorry? I know. Yeah, that would be no problem.
So basically, it's not like it's going to take you a lot of time. You would be prepared, we would be prepared to move forward in two weeks with the plans as revised, reflect all, all the things that you worked out with the neighborhood.
Would I have to come back for another one after that?
I think that would be his option, or was it required?
It's a rezoning, it's a two, or two readings would be required, so.
He doesn't have to present for those.
Right.
In order for us to review it.
On your deadline in your package, it's not-
And what I'm hearing is that he doesn't even need eight days, he needs two days, if I'm hearing it correctly.
So the risk is, if they're not satisfactory, or there's issues or whatever on a second reading, you know, it gets denied. I mean, that's the risk to the developer, too, if there's a wonky process. You know what I mean? If like what Mr. Twain says, you know, you get it done ahead of time, on first reading, we can make comments and, you know, finesse things, and then, you know, you're apt to, you know, have a shot at second reading to make small tweaks. If you go the route proposed by Mr. Wolfson, you know, incorporate all these changes in the drawing, and then we essentially see his voluntary changes at second reading, then if there's something we don't like, I guess they're, I don't know.
Well, if I may, Mayor, procedurally, in between your first reading approval and the second reading action, staff with the assistance of the city attorney's office is going to prepare a conditional rezoning agreement. And that agreement is going to be based on your first reading approval. And then Mr. Wolfson or his development company would have to sign it, and all of the contingencies that are part of his offer would have to be shown on that plan so that you could approve it and execute that conditional rezoning agreement. It's really not an opportunity to make revisions. It's, you've blessed it on first reading, and you've incorporated it into a document as part of second reading. So again, that's why I would recommend to you that you, if, if Mr. Wolfson wants to make revisions to his submission, that it get postponed until those submissions are in front of you, and you can actually act on them.
Commissioner Levaser. I'm going to move that we postpone this, Mayor, until October 28th, to allow the, the developer to resubmit plans that reflect what he's voluntarily willing to do, as worked out with the neighborhood.
I support that.
All right. Discussion? That was Commissioner Dubb that supported. Commissioner Macy?
So I guess, and what, I understand what you're saying, that most of the changes that they're asking for actually don't require you to really do anything to these plans, which I think is why it's going to take you till Wednesday to get it done only. But they're, the asterisks, the question that I had from the beginning when I saw, when I saw this today was, these asterisks, what's the homeowner response? Like, what did the Lawson Homeowners Association say about these three, and then about the back patios?
They wrote it. So the asterisks are basically, we didn't write it, they wrote it. And those asterisks basically are saying they are agreeing to do those asterisks over-
They are agreeing to those, to your request to change this, the height of the guardrail and the height of the fence.
Right.
Okay, I was, that was not clear to me. And then, it seems like there, I'm afraid that there's semantics issue about the patios, because you're saying, well, we don't have approval for the patios, but I think they're thinking of those dens as gray.
No, that's what, that's what we're talking, we, we don't even have room on the plan, on the site plan, to get a patio, because there's a sidewalk five feet out.
So the patio is the extension, you know, like you would have at ground level?
Yeah.
But what the referral is, is the actual little balcony that comes out of the den on the second floor. That's where we're talking about the guardrails and stuff?
No, well, the guard, that's different. The, the second floor above the garage, there's a patio. That patio, their request was, is that we make it so that you can't see people from the neighborhood. You can't see people standing, or, I mean, sitting down, and a bunch of people sitting down on, on, on that patio. What we wanted to do was, instead of doing wood, which wouldn't look as nice, it'd probably be less money, but it wouldn't look nice, is to use glass, but make it obscure glass so you can't see through it. And that's, and then the other issue is down on the ground behind the garage, basically. If we turned that into a den down there and eliminated one of the parking, which we can, can do, if we did that, they wanted to make sure we didn't put a patio outside from that. And obviously, we're not, we don't have a right to do it because it's not on the plan that's being approved.
Okay, I got it. I missed, I read what they were saying as considering that den to be like a patio in the way it was situated and facing out. But I hear what you're saying. They're saying if there's a den there, they don't want you to later think-
Let's put a patio out there. We already got a patio, a balcony above that, that's, that's there. So we really don't have, and with those, we're basically saying, you know, I don't have any other things that I don't know what we'd even be changing except showing the, the fence on the, on the drawing. Can you think of anything else that we're doing besides showing the words eight foot instead of six foot? Okay. You know, and, and I'm, I'm not sure, Tim, I don't know if there's anything else. And, and we eliminated the swale already on the plan. So I, I'm not sure what we haven't done.
I guess if you're looking for me to make comment, I, I think the idea of saving all the trees north of the building is going to impact the landscape plan that's been submitted, it's going to impact the fencing plan that's going to be submitted, it's going, you're going to go around trees. So I, I think there's a lot of plans and details that are impacted based on some of the suggested revisions. I don't have a problem with any of those, but I think you're going to want a clear understanding as part of your approval on first reading as to what the developer is proposing and offering as his conditions. So again, that's why I would recommend until you've seen those revisions, and the den on the first floor has a walkout wall on it. Once he leaves and the new homeowner buys it and wants to put a patio out, there's no permit issued by the city for a patio. So there are some things that are not really going to be enforceable unless you eliminate that door wall and not allow the door wall. So there are things like that that I think, depending on what he offers, that staff would make in, in our report to you as to what you should consider going forward. And to get this the day of the meeting, my recommendation is you postpone it.
Okay. Commissioner Dubb, then Commissioner Gibbs.
Yeah, I'm supporting the motion to postpone because I believe we, we do have a compromise here. I think everyone's happy. I think it's just in everyone's best interest that we all see it down in writing before we act, I mean, both in your interest and the neighborhood's interest and our interest, to not create more work for folks than necessary. But the read that I'm getting is that, you know, this looks good, we just need to see it on paper.
Right, I mean, I'm agreeing to everything that-
Yeah, I think you're in, I think you're in really good shape. I just want to make sure that, you, we're all envisioning the same thing when we're looking at this agreement, and, and we want to see the completed plan so we can pass it on first reading. And, and then get you done on second reading, you know, go ahead and bring it around, so.
So would we still wind up giving you a document that's signed by me and them?
Well, I think, I think, well, I think all we need is something that you're bringing forward from a voluntary perspective.
Yeah.
The plans that are updated in that, you know, sufficiently incorporate your volunteer changes to us so we understand what they are. So I'm not going to speak for, for Mr. Twain, but I would imagine that things that can be drawn and designed, like landscaping plans and all of that, marking existing tree and all of that stuff, and here's where the fences, I think that would be appropriate. Some of the other things that maybe aren't necessarily always incorporated into a, a drawing, you might make reference in the notes or something like that, so we have sufficient documented, you know, if all of a sudden Mr. Twain wins a lottery, leaves and, you know, brings all of his planning associates with him, we have a plan there we can look at and make sure that things get implemented the right way.
Okay.
Mr. Twain's hoping and crossing his fingers right now. Although I tell him, when he got into public service, he really did win the lottery.
Right.
Commissioner, oh, I'm sorry, I had Commissioner Gibbs and Commissioner Perusch.
I'm first. Go. Um-
Um, two things, I would, well, maybe three, I would really prefer that it's only two stories on the buildings that face the houses, but if the residents are okay with that, that's fine, I think having the four stories on the, on the area that is against the Harrison, the busier street, that'll help block noise, and hopefully you can incorporate some sort of building materials to help absorb some noise, and from the train, because I've lived next to a train track, and I know how it is. It's not, it's, it takes a lot of getting used to. My other question is, the, the area that the residents, the homeowners, the homeowner association mentioned that they wanted to make into a park, is that, that's not property that the, the development owns, correct? That's, that's city property, okay. So we will, we will figure out amongst ourselves and what we can do with that property, but I think a park is a great, just a small micro park, is a great idea, just to, to buffer, you know what I mean, the two zones and make it easier for everyone.
We're doing it on one side anyhow.
Right.
The backside has still got the same trees that were, or evergreens that will be there, or arborvitus, but it'll just be more the landscaping in front of the trees that we do on our side, we can put it on the other side as well, as put some sod down and make it more attractive.
We like the idea of, I think the joke we used, a berm, what's a berm? Is that some guy you wrestled with back in high school? You know, but the idea of a park being more, having a permanence, you know, we're not all going to be here, you know, 50 years from now, so future generations will look, and it helps kind of preserve, but also not just preserve, and, but it takes away that barrier to say, okay, I think Mr. Thompson did an eloquent job talking about transition and the neighborhood and everything like that, and that's really what you get, is you get, instead of just taking this lump of dirt with some trees in it, kind of like, don't drive through here, it's turned into, hey, you know, you can't drive through here, I suppose you could if you had a really big truck, but, you know, this is, this is a park, it's a place where people can come together on both sides of the, the streets, so. I think it was Andrew that came up with that idea? I'm not sure, but it was a good discussion, so.
I agree.
Good product of the meeting.
I thought it was you.
Was it me?
Yeah, it was you.
Catholic social guilt, I can never take credit for anything, sorry, Mr. Wolfson.
Right, that's all right.
Commissioner Perush.
Just two things, first of all, we're all so grateful that you took the time to meet with the association, and that the association took the time to meet with the developer and work this all out. It really is a model for how these types of developments that are in an area that used to be industrial, you know, should, should work, and instead of, you know, people panicking and thinking, oh, this can't work at all, you know, it has to be stopped in its tracks, the acknowledgement that sometime, some kind of change is going to come to this area, and that if we all work together to make it appropriate for the, for the neighborhood, I think is a good thing. So I think it's, it's a model for, for things like this going forward. The second thing is, you mentioned, you know, having to sign something, I think the procedure, as I understand it from Mr. Twing, is that if you just revise your plans, that's what needs to happen between now and, and our next meeting, but then in between the first reading and the second reading, which would happen a couple of weeks later, that's when the actual development, or not development, but conditional zoning agreement is, is worked out. And that's what is signed. So that doesn't have to be done between now and, and the 28th, that comes in between the first and the second reading, so there's time for that to happen.
Now, for you to have it for the second meeting?
Well, if you got it blessed on the 28th at first reading.
Yeah.
Based on the motion that's on the table, which is, I'm totally in violation of all Robert's rules, I raise my hand and admit it, because we're discussing something that's on the table, but then, from there, we would approve those plans, and then you would work to, between that and the next meeting, a couple of weeks later, codify in the agreement to get the zoning change, and then after that second reading, it's good to go. And there's no mystery, and everything's blessed, and you don't have any additional hiccups, the neighbors know exactly what's going in, because those plans are articulate, and, you know, there's no guesswork, there's no inference, what a two foot means, not that we'd have an inference about two extra feet, but I think it really tidies a lot of stuff up and may save you a lot of time in the future, just in case there's that one tree that might be an issue.
Right.
It could save you hours and hours of headaches, so at least we're clear up front what it is, that's how the process will go.
Yep.
So it does push it out a couple of weeks, but probably might save you two weeks on the back end with a misunderstanding.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we do have a motion on the table. Any other discussion? All right. I'll just add that, you know, echo what Commissioner Perush said, I appreciate the neighborhood, I mean, you guys have been so great, when it came to the berm discussion, you said, hey, we have some concerns and thoughts, we, you're our elected representatives, like, hear us out. You did the same here, you opened up, you know, your neighborhood association meetings, and Mr. Wolfson, you opened up yourself to, to discuss with both commissioners and with, with myself. It was very enjoyable to learn and hear all the different perspectives, and the brainstorming that took place, and I'll just, I mean, being there firsthand, I just echo, you know, and applaud the neighborhood association, and, and Mr. Wolfson, thank you for, you know, listening to everyone's concerns as well, it's, it's, you know, a good model. All right, with that, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we'll see you in two weeks, Mr. Wolfson, thank you. And thank you, Lawson Park, I know it's a late night here, but, you know. All right, this brings us to item number 10, which is approval of proposed water lien policies. Ms. Hugh Banks.
Hi.
Basically, what we do currently is when water bills are at least four months delinquent, at March 1st, we add them as part of our settlement and forward them to the county for collections. Unfortunately, this doesn't give any allowance for misapplied payments and their corrections, which happens a lot. We estimate probably 50 to 75 payments a month are misapplied by our customers using a bill pay service through their bank. So if somebody sets up their bill pay service with both their tax and their water, and don't pay attention, or don't notice when they make the payment, that they're actually making the payment to tax, to a former residence of theirs, to another property that they own, the one bill may go delinquent. So usually when we catch those are when they have already been turned over to the county, additional fees, interest, penalties have been added. So once they're turned over to the county, there's very little that we can do to correct it. It, it's, causes a delay, causes increased cost to the customer, so what we're proposing is to add a step before we turn things over to the county, and that's putting the delinquent amount on the tax bill before it goes to the county. That's what many other cities do, they put their water bills on the taxes, delinquent water bills on the tax roll before they're turned over to the county, so it gives the customer a little bit of additional time, it gives them a second notice via the tax bill rather than the water bill, to make arrangements, to make payments on their water bills. So it's no difference in the end procedure, in that it will still be turned over to the county if it remains delinquent, but they'll have one more opportunity to make payments by it going on their tax bill. So basically, what we're suggesting here is that same four-month lag, that something be delinquent at least four months before being added to the tax bill, both in the July and the December tax bill, so it's backing up that process four months, and when things are delinquent, having them added, and then again, going to the county after at least it's appeared on a tax bill.
Questions for Ms. Hugh Banks? Commissioner Levasseur.
Just to clarify, when you say going to the county under this procedure, it would go to the county in the form of an unpaid tax, so to speak, in the same manner, in the same timeline as an unpaid tax?
Yes, as part of the settlement process that happens annually, we turn over unpaid taxes to the county after March 1st, which is, that's everyone who collects taxes, that, that is a typical procedure. What happens currently is someone could pay their December tax bill, so they have a paid receipt for 100% paid, but because we've turned over delinquent water, then they're getting a notice from the county that their December taxes aren't paid. Well, it's very confusing to the customer, so we're hoping to prevent that, as well as it, by putting it on the tax roll, a person has one more opportunity to see that as a bill before it goes to the county.
Ms. Hugh Banks, before, it's, I mean, timing's everything, right? You know what I mean? But for a lot of these, we get billed quarterly, but by doing so, you know, it's not like we're just ignoring this person, we're doing follow-up, like, hey, you, you know, you missed a payment, something happened, and it just gives them a little bit more buffer to resolve it with their bank, or with whatever, you know, however that payment was applied misappropriately, or maybe it, it wasn't paid for some reason, and we're giving them more notice and more opportunity to pay.
Yeah.
So it's, it's less hassle for our water department, and certainly less hassle for the customer because of the circumstance, sometimes unintentionally made.
Yes, and, and we've spent the last year notifying customers who are bill pay customers to make corrections, unfortunately, letters sent aren't always received, or aren't always reviewed, so we still have a fair number of bill pay issues where things are being paid.
Try to drag them down.
We try to, but not always successful.
Any other questions? Commissioner Perush?
I'll move approval of this.
Motion by Commissioner Perush, seconded by Commissioner Dubac, discussion. Commissioner Douglas?
Just want to quickly say, this is great customer service, but we see a problem, we respond to it in a way that benefits our, our customers, our taxpayers, and helps our staff, too, helps ease the burden of them having to make all of those phone calls. So, well done, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just echo that, thank you, Ms. Hugh Banks, I know you've proposed a couple things here to tweak and refine what we're doing, you know, the small changes add up to make big differences, so we appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. All right, this brings us to item number 11, which is the approval of the Gov HR proposal, city manager executive search.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, again, hopefully the last time before we can actually get this ball rolling. So as I mentioned to you at the last meeting, there's a couple of things I'd like to, I wanted to have clarified, I talked to Mr. Gillum about this, I told you that in some of the proposals, I find a couple, I found a couple of small items that I'd just like to see clarified, just to make sure we're all on the same page. So the items are all outlined in the, in the memo, but just to regurgitate, so one of the items that I didn't think was very clear in their proposal, which James Fitrino at Gov HR admitted was a little bit overlooked on their, on their end, is the full position analysis that we initially asked for in the, in the RFP, as it was written, so that includes a benefit analysis, compensation analysis, position description analysis. So that was one of the items I brought to him, and I just asked him to, to provide some clarification and that, and put him to writing that he is indeed, and his firm was indeed committed to, to fully complying with that item. The, the other item that I didn't think was very clear, and I just wanted to have clarified, just so we would not be surprised by some of the costs, is the recruitment fee, mentioned a certain number of visits by the consultant, what it didn't really specify is what happens if we actually go over this, that number of visits, and also are any of the hours that are billed, so to speak, for, for any email communication, phone communication, or any other kind of communication with the commissioners, if that's factored in, to that not to exceed amount, so you just assure me again in the memo that you have in front of you, that that's all already rolled into that. Printing of the recruitment brochure was an item I didn't ask him about, that was not covered on your not to exceed. He did stress with me that, and I have no reason to, to question him on that, from my perspective, is that he doesn't really see a need to, to produce or make prints of that brochure, obviously nowadays, especially with the candidates now, most of the stuff will be communicated electronically. If we do end up printing some of the, some of the copies, I mean, we have our own print shop down in the basement, so he did tell me that, you know, also as part of the RFP was that the material that's being produced is going to be ours, so obviously, once it becomes ours, at that point, too, we are free to distribute that in whichever way we want, and manipulate and use it whichever way we want. Then the last item was just to, to clarify, I know in the last meeting, the direction to staff was to negotiate a contract, so in this case, the proposal in essence is the contract, so after clarifying some of the items that are in the memo, again, they were put into writing, I think we're in good shape, and really all at this point, I think needs to be done is to the proposal sign off on, and we can get the ball rolling, so.
Questions for Mr. Vandal. Commissioner Douglas?
I'll move approval of the resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, seconded by Commissioner Macy, discussion. That's a good sign, Mr. Vandal, all right, it looks like you've addressed all the issues. All right, very clear, thank you very much. I'll call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. All right, we got a search firm, so everyone's going to get busy from HR, and you know this body as well, so, good. This brings us to item number 12, which was the item added by Commissioner Levasseur called cellphone tower discussion. Commissioner Levasseur.
Thank you, I've heard some rumblings in the park about, in the public, about a proposed cell tower, I want to say in the area of Troy and Fourth Street, and some, some talk is if it's already a done deal, that the, the city would be contracting with the owner of this tower to provide services, I presume, for, for public safety, communication. But, but I, I don't recall that issue coming in front of this commission, and I just wanted to get some insights, what's going on, and, and what our options are here.
I guess that's a question Chief O'Donnell.
Okay, if you could, I, I think a little history lesson's important, when we started the whole new development, we knew would be building a park right where we're at, we have a 250-foot communications tower, the city owns it, the county built it, the city bought it from the county for a dollar, 15, 20 years ago, something like that. The, it is part of a communication system that every police and fire department utilizes in the county, so it's a county communication system, but we all use it. The county has determined that in order for public safety to have any kind of penetration in the buildings downtown, we need the 250-foot tower in the downtown area somewhere. It's been explained to me that this has a lot to do with the amount of power, because we're so close to Canada, the amount of power they're allowed to produce, that it has to be taller, because they can't produce more power from it. So when we started our whole project many years ago, we had to find a new place for the tower. At the time, the county's position was, you're moving it, it's Royal Oak's expense to move the tower. I didn't think that was right, but it, we moved, we were moving forward, understanding that would probably be on the hook for the cost of this tower. In finding a location, it was very difficult, but we notified AT&amp;T that, that they have a lease on the tower currently, that would be breaking that lease as this project moves forward, and we developed a rapport with the people at AT&amp;T as we both were looking for an area to solve our problem. I think there's actually, before the first parking structure went up, so when we were looking at different locations, we're like, can we incorporate as part of the parking structure? We looked at some of the buildings in town, you think, well, they look pretty tall, that should work, they're not nearly tall enough, so seeing if we could do something smaller, like on top of the fifth, let's say, and none of those really worked for, you know, for what we needed it to do. So eventually, AT&amp;T decided that, that they have their property, they could build it on their property. They, they, they only need about 100 feet, maybe 150 feet, but they agreed to build a 200-foot, 500. They, they, they only need about 100 feet, maybe 150 feet, but they agreed to build a 200-foot, 50-foot tower to accommodate the public safety communication needs. This, the county then would lease space off the tower. So the city is basically getting out of the tower business. So it's not the city's tower. It's AT&amp;T's building a tower on their property. The city really has nothing to do with it, other than if a new tower isn't constructed, when the new station opens up, that tower cannot come down. About, maybe a year ago, our county commissioner, Dave Woodward, was able to negotiate a deal for us where the county is actually responsible for the first $500,000 of a tower move. So when, when, and now the tower itself, I think it's estimated it will cost somewhere between 350 and 450,000 dollars. That's just for the structure. There's a, all the guts that go in there are a few hundred thousand dollars. So there's, there's expense. It's probably not going to be the City of Royal Oak's expense, but it's government expense on that. So AT&amp;T agreed to build it. They have a lease agreement with the county. The terms are favorable to the county. I don't know what they are and I, it's not our business, or I mean, I really don't care. They work for the county. And so that, they made, AT&amp;T made their normal application through planning. Two months ago, they got the special land use approval, but wanted, they wanted to work on the site plan. We came back last week and AT&amp;T didn't do enough on the site plan, so they got pushed back to, to really enhance. And I think they got very clear instruction of what the planning commission was looking for. Did I miss anything, Tim?
It's going to the ZBA, too.
It will go to the ZBA also. That's kind of a funny issue, but the ZBA is waiting for the site plan approval. But because it's so tall, there's a fall radius, but the towers now are designed, they don't tip over. If they, in the unlikely event that, that it get blown over, they crumble into itself. Our current tower isn't designed that way. But I, the tower, like I said, we have a 250-foot tower in town right now. This tower is moving almost two blocks directly south on Ameritech or AT&amp;T's property.
Do we have engineering reports that indicate why one site might be more desirable than another?
I don't have engineering reports. The county would have some sort of information on how it has to be in, in the downtown area. It can't, we won't get penetration in our buildings in the downtown area unless it's there. And that's the position that the county experts have, have had from the very beginning.
Okay, so, so I understand it needs to be downtown. You know, that's the conclusion of the county. But, you know, we have various sites downtown. We have the top of a parking structure. We have over by the police station. We, we have a variety of places. We have the AT&amp;T site. I, I'm just wondering if there's been some engineering review to determine whether there's various sites that might be possible and what the positives and negatives of those various sites are.
Well, we, we determine that it can't go on top of, it's, it can't go on top of anything. And we even looked at that before these structures were built. It can't go on top because it needs this foundation because it's so tall. So it cannot go on top of the parking structure or anything like that. It would work if we opted to say, let's build a tower. Farmer's Market, I guess, is if that's what you're asking me. You know, that, that's close enough. I'm reasonably, I mean, I, I'm very certain that would be close enough. The, the issue of the tower is, no matter where you build it, there's going to be people unhappy with where you build it. But remember, we're not building it. AT&amp;T is building a tower on their property. We're not doing anything.
Okay, but, but my understanding is that's with the assumption that the city's going to lease space on that tower?
The county is going to lease space, not us.
Royal Oak wouldn't be leasing space for our communications?
No, because it's county communications that we utilize. So we have, everyone uses the same thing, but it's, it's county space and the county would have a contract with them, not us. The city has no, no role in this, other than come July, when we move into our new station, if that tower, if we don't have a new tower built and operating, that tower cannot come down. And because the basement of the police station is, powers it and holds the guts, really, the police station probably can't come down.
Commissioner Dubbott?
Thanks, Chief. That's, that's going to, I just want to make sure I'm tracking here. So this is an essential piece of public safety infrastructure.
Yes.
That has to exist somewhere in our downtown.
Yes.
Currently exists right now, the big tower between the police station and City Hall.
Yes.
Okay. We were planning on having to incur this expense.
Yes.
But we found a way that a private company is going to build it on their own property.
Yes.
Not on one of our properties.
Correct.
And it's two blocks from where it is right now.
Correct.
Sorry. So you're checking a lot of boxes, taking, does it make sense, right?
100%.
Okay. So that's the status quo right now, like, no city property, no city dollars, saving at least a half million dollars.
Yes.
And getting something that has to exist here somewhere done on a private dime.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Commissioner Douglas?
So the planning, I, I serve in the planning commission. The planning commission was not thrilled about this, to say the least. We did, the commission did finally vote to give them the special land use, acknowledging that while this structure doesn't meet any of the conditions of a development in our downtown, I mean, our functional purpose as a government is public safety. And this is, the, we were compelled, persuaded by the chief's argument and Mr. Gillum's other comments, that this is essential. So we did approve the special land use. We, however, were not happy with the first site plan that AT&amp;T brought us. We sent them back to the drawing boards, giving them admittedly vague, but we thought compelling instructions to bring us a much more attractive site plan, and they didn't. So at our most recent planning commission meeting, the planning commission clearly spelled out what we are looking for in terms of fencing, landscaping, the barrier, the, the thing around the thing, asking for a park bench, a bench on a corner of their property that's part of the public right of way. We're not happy about this, but if they meet the conditions that we've described, I think the planning commission will approve their site plan. And my personal opinion is that, you know, after a couple of months, nobody will notice it's there. I mean, people don't look up, people don't know we've got a tower on the back of our building. So this is not an ideal circumstance in our downtown. We didn't see AT&amp;T developing this parking lot for any other, and certainly more suitable downtown function. We're not happy with it, but I'm, I'm inclined to say that we're going to have to live with it.
Commissioner Macy?
I have a question, I don't know if this is for the chief or for Mr. Gillum, but is there a danger to the county, and thus us through the county, of them deciding at one point they don't want to lease space on this tower to us anymore? And then suddenly we don't have county communications?
The county's going to have to provide those communications from somewhere in some form or another.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think that's a realistic concern. I think the county's corp. council will, they have a lease agreement. They've already negotiated all that. In fact, originally with our planning, we had planned to run fiber to the tower, but it sounds like they're going to lease fiber space from AT&amp;T. So the, I think, truthfully, I mean, I, I believe that before that's an issue, technology's going to evolve. We'll be in the next phase of communication that's done in a different way, but.
Back when we thought we were going to have to do this, where were we going to put it?
We never really had a good location. It was kind of put on a map behind the police station. But that was never real, that was more early in the process, we just didn't know. We was, we were looking. And we spent a lot of time looking at maps and areas of what, what would be a good spot. And there's not a good spot in downtown Royal Oak. We thought the center street structure, that open space over by the center street structure might be a good location. And then it was a thought with the Radisson, might be going up there, there'd be issues with the train there also. But we, we looked everywhere and then AT&amp;T said they were going to build it on their property. I, I, in my opinion, that's, that's a win-win for everybody, so we thought that was a great idea, so.
Commissioner Macy, or if you wanted to defer to Mr. Gillum to answer a question or clarification?
Yeah, you want, go first.
I just, I had a question for the chief. As I recall, at some point in time, chief, I heard that AT&amp;T intends to build a tower regardless, to improve their own level of service?
Well, they need a tower. I don't know that, I mean, their tower would still needs approvals, and I don't know if you get them if you're not doing, serving the other public good. But they, AT&amp;T can get by with a tower on top of their existing building, and they can get by with their needs, is what they're telling me.
It probably is a fair question for you, but then if we chose to build a tower somewhere else, is AT&amp;T going to want to lease space on that tower, or are they going to go ahead and try to build their own tower anyway?
I would suspect they would try to just get space on our tower. I mean, I think they, they need a tower. I mean, they were happy with the arrangement they have right now. It was, you know, we're the one who had to tell them we're going to break the lease. So they were happy with that. And like the, the, the relationship started with, well, what are you guys going to do? Are you going to build something new? And so we started looking and then they came to us. And I said, if you guys, we just developed a rapport and then this opportunity came up and we thought it was a good one, so. But it's.
So my questions are now, I think, for Commissioner Douglas. How much of the footprint of that parking lot does it take up?
Well, the site plan that submitted the, I'll call it the compound area, I believe is 40 feet by 50 feet. The tower itself, the base of the tower, I believe there's three, three legs that go into the ground and proceed up as a lattice-type tower. And I believe the base of that is some 25 feet between each of the legs. The planning commission did ask the AT&amp;T to locate the tower further south on the site. That's why it was postponed, so it would push it to the southeast corner. I haven't seen revised plans yet, but it would, it would take up a portion of the parking lot, but not the entire parking lot.
Okay, I think my next question, which was, so the planning commission didn't, you said really didn't like this? Like, what does a tower plan that the planning commission would like look like?
So we're asking them for a 10-foot brick or masonry?
Minimum of 12.
Was it 12?
Minimum of 12-foot setback. Yeah, and eight-foot wrought iron fence, fencing around the equipment shed itself, a landscape plan along Fourth and, and Williams. Again, I don't have the details yet from what they're going to submit. They do have a cutout on, on the northwest corner that the planning commission asked them to upgrade and improve with landscaping and some benches and some other things. They are required under the special land use permit to allow co-location. So in addition to the county's facilities and AT&amp;T facilities, if someone else is looking for a location downtown, they have to allow them permission to put it on this site, so that would keep us from requests for other towers. The plan shows at least two future tenant sites potentially. So those are, I, I think, the summary of the details of it at this point.
And do we, do we make money or much money off of our lease of the tower that we currently own?
No, not a ton. I think it's 20,000 a year, but I'm not certain. Dave, do you remember? I thought it was in that ballpark.
It's in the neighborhood of that amount, yeah. Could be more, could be less. Is that 20,000 from AT&amp;T or 20,000 from the county?
Commissioner Gibbs and Commissioner Lavasser.
Go ahead and finish your question, Mr. Commissioner Lavasser.
Thank you. If that's right.
Yeah.
That 20,000, is that from AT&amp;T or does the county pay us as well, or how does that work?
No, no, just AT&amp;T's.
E.T., right.
Commissioner Gibbs?
If I understand correctly what I think Mr. Twing said, there could be three towers on this 25-foot, square foot property, piece of property, or?
No, not three towers. It's one tower with three legs. It's a lattice-type tower.
Okay, but three companies or like Sprint, AT&amp;T, and Comcast, whatever?
Well, initially, it's AT&amp;T and the county.
Okay.
If someone else wants to locate a facility downtown, this would be an option.
But it doesn't change the infrastructure of the site?
Pardon me?
Doesn't change the tower infrastructure to add people to it?
No, it would simply add the antenna around, the antenna array around somewhere on the existing tower.
So five different cellphone companies could be renting space on this tower, but there would just be a, an antenna ring? For lack of, I, I don't know all the technical terms, but some kind of additional antenna thing. Now, would those other companies need approval to do that?
They generally would submit a co-location application to the city. We'd review it, that they're compliant with a co-location, and then they'd get permits from building.
And they would be renting that space or that area on the tower from AT&amp;T?
Yes.
Not from us?
Not from us.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Perush?
In the parking area that they're talking about locating, that this is a private AT&amp;T parking lot, correct? This is not a city parking lot?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And my recollection from when this whole thing was first proposed, you know, the various locations, at least on city property, that we were considering it, aside from the parking decks, which turned out to be not feasible, they were actually spaces like in the farmer's market lot or other parking areas that were public parking areas. So if you, you would have an enormous tower taking up multiple parking spaces and you'd lose those parking spaces. So I think that's part of this trade-off, too. That if it's not located here and it has to be in the downtown and it has to be on a flat piece of land that, that's currently unoccupied, you know, what are we talking about? We're talking about public parking lots, because that's about the only valuable land, or available open land that's available. And then we lose more parking. So I think the fact that this is on a piece of property that doesn't take away public parking is, is also a benefit to, to the downtown area.
Commissioner Lavasser?
I suspect this would not be a problem, but I'm just wondering if we've checked to see if the property's been pledged by AT&amp;D to secure any liens, any mortgage rent and that sort. I don't, we, I, we didn't know. I don't think we'd normally do that because AT&amp;T's building a tower, it's not us.
My, my concern there is if, if we're going to be leasing on, on this property, that we couldn't be chopped, have our legs chopped out from under us by some lender who didn't get paid by AT&amp;D? It's probably a very remote possibility, but it's just something I think in due diligence, we should probably be aware.
I want to be clear, we are not leasing. It's the county's leasing. So that's the county's, would be the county, they're signing the contracts. I don't know that we could tell the county to do that.
Understood. My, my concern would still be the same, that if you have some secured lender who basically says, "AT&amp;T, you haven't paid me, we're taking over this property and any rights of anyone that come under you, AT&amp;T, you're wiped clean." If, if that's the county, they're wiped clean. If we're relying upon the county, that's a problem. It's probably a very remote possibility. I certainly wouldn't expect it, but I think in just due diligence, it's something that we should be, be looking at.
Any other discussion? Any other questions? Okay, so the next time this will be discussed is at the planning commission coming up in November?
Yes.
And then from there, it would come back to this commission? Or once the planning commission? And zoning, it's got to go to planning and zoning, right?
Correct.
I'll be the planning commission on the site plan. The ZBA will deal with setback variance.
And then it comes here.
And then it comes here. And then it comes here.
Any other discussion?
There'd be no city commission action that would be required for what's been proposed.
I've got no other questions, other than whether someone has a towel for the water, I just pour it all over the place.
Hopefully not on your lap, that'll be awkward at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Are we looking for a motion to adjourn? See, the bagels worked out. We have a motion by Commissioner Dubbuck, is there a second?
A second?
Second by Commissioner Douglas. Motion to adjourn, is there any discussion?
Everybody should get bagels.
All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.